Good morning, Fisher.
Good morning, Nora.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. As always, we don't want to close the widgets. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all. And before we begin, I'd ask that we all join in a moment of silence and sympathy and empathy with the victims of the incredible storm in Puerto Rico and the islands and the unspeakable horror in Las Vegas. Thank you. For participation, our first speaker is Christopher Stone.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
Good mornings.
This is, I have to phone call, sir.
Good morning Chairman Taylor, Commissioner Wenzel, members of the board. My name is Christopher Stone. I'm a fifth grade teacher in Wallingford, Connecticut. I know you were down in Wallingford yesterday, so very happy for the teacher in my school district. So I'm a teacher, I'm a fifth grade teacher in Wallingford. I'm also the director of Connecticut STEM Academy. We are housed at the Spanish community of Wallingford. My testimony today is regarding the importance of STEM education for school-aged students. In particular, I'd like to share with you details about our program, the Connecticut STEM Academy, which is educator-driven and offered at little or no cost to students throughout the state of Connecticut. As a teacher in the Wallingford Public Schools, I'm proud to share programming that my town has supported for over the past few years. In the spirit of innovation that this board helped pioneer, Connecticut STEM Academy was established in 2012 to address the need for ongoing STEM enrichment opportunities for students of all backgrounds. Since that time, we've been dreaming big by expanding and regionalizing our youth and family-based programming to have a greater impact throughout Connecticut. We have, since 2012, impacted over 15,000 participants. Connecticut STEM Academy is led by certified teachers and informal educators who believe in furthering student understanding of STEM concepts beyond the classroom with a special focus on direct family engagement, gender equity, engaging girls in STEM, and accessing access to program for at-risk students and students of color. The goal of our program is to meet the challenging, or the challenge of providing students with rich, hands-on learning experiences through after-school STEM academies, directly involving parents and children in these learning experiences through our unique family STEM nights, summer STEM camps in Connecticut, and Shein-Mahan Planetarium nights open to the public. Within our programming, we are strive, we're striving to provide students with NGSS learning experiences that reflect and enrich learning in the classroom. Our STEM ecosystem has various components that are thriving, expanding, and impacting students. These elements include the family STEM nights that I mentioned, as well as our pre-K STEM initiative, community-based programming for all grade levels, after-school programming directly at local schools, summer STEM camps, and academic bridge academies for at-risk youth and professional growth for certified and pre-service teachers. At our location at the Spanish community of Wallingford, we are dedicate, we have a dedicated storage and kit refurbishment space, instructional space, as well as commitment from the Wallingford's mayor and town council to expand into a new 4,000-square-foot Connecticut STEM center adjacent to our current location by the summer of 2018. Recent expansion programs are also running with the Handing You Services at the Keefe Community Center and dedicated space at the Meriden New Britain YMCA. Our recognitions include funding from NASA Summer of Innovation Grants, the Connecticut Education Association, 3M Corporation, Cox Communications, and many others. Our regional collaborators include Southern Connecticut State University, Yale Peabody Museum, the Mahan Planetarium at Shein High School, which is part of the Wallingford Public Schools, and the Quinnipiac University Future Teachers Organization. Most recently, we received support from a $100,000 grant from AT&amp;T Aspire Grant in collaboration with the National Education Association Foundation. With the support of the National Education Association Foundation and the Connecticut Education Association Foundation, we seek to continue to provide our STEM enrichment programming to students in central Connecticut region at little or no cost. So with that in mind, I'd like to thank the board for your support of STEM education, and I invite you to see some of our various programs that we are offering to students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kiana Winpoop, and this is my son Najee Taylor.
Could you just move the mic closer to you or point it up or something so I can stick into it?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Kiana Winpoop again, and this is my son Najee Taylor. My children have attended the Berlin School since 2013. Najee's now 11 years old, and he goes to a different middle school outside of Berlin. He made that choice, and he was able to get in through the lottery process. My seven-year-old, Nas, was not. He is experiencing a lot of anxiety because of the issues in Berlin with the bullying and the racial tension. My little one went there probably a year after 2014. He now has missed 25 days of school, and I'm quite concerned about his attendance record and all of the issues of him going to school. Yesterday, I brought him for about an hour visit to just try to get him back into the class, and his anxiety was over the top. I later on that day brought him to his pediatrician and, you know, working with people to try to get him back into school, but I just don't understand, you know, why they can't provide him a tutor or why he can't get chosen to go to another school until these issues are resolved. He's experiencing things like, you know, "You're too black," and the kids run away from him on the playground. They don't want to play with him. He's, they have like a buddy bench system where he's supposed to sit on the buddy bench and children are supposed to come play with him or, you know, be encouraged to go, you know, find a buddy that's on the buddy bench. But the kids are saying like, you know, "We're gonna play with you," and then they don't, they run away from him. His older brother had experienced a teacher telling him, "Black is a scary color and white is nice and pure." He's also experienced where, you know, the kids have told him that when Donald Trump becomes president, slavery is gonna be live and well again, you know. You know, numerous issues. You know, he's been blacked out of a picture in second grade, you know. I have a picture, I have a copy of the picture. It is just, you know, I've been working with crack, I've been working, I've been trying to get people at the State Board of Education to hear, you know, this is now, you know, to the point where the kid is not getting on the bus and he is not going to school. I don't know what else to do. I don't know how to drag my seven-year-old into second-grade classrooms and say, "You need to be here regardless of what people are telling you." I don't know, you know, when is the bullying gonna stop? I don't know when enough is enough, and I'm just trying to reach out for him and kids like him that parents don't come forward. I just talked to somebody in the parking lot, said that, you know, the same things are going on, and, you know, people are scared or people just don't know how to go about to say, you know, "These things are happening to my child." You go to meet with the superintendent, the superintendent hears you, he seems like a very nice guy. It's not really about the niceness, it's about when the bullying is gonna stop. And my kid is really crying out right now for somebody to help him. He even told the principal yesterday, "Why can't the Parents Club help pay for me to tutor?" Because, you know, we saw the playground, it had nice basketball hoops and new play escapes, and he said, you know, the Parents Club had donated that stuff to the school. And my little seven-year-old was like, "Well, why can't they, you know, donate money for me to, you know, get a tutor or put me in a different school?" He doesn't quite understand how the process works, and he's asking me questions that I really can't answer for him either. So I'm here today just to ask all of you for some guidance of how, you know, we can make these changes in these children's lives that are experiencing this, even the ones that, you know, at four years old, like when he went out there, he really didn't, wasn't able to articulate the words to say, "Mommy, you know, this is going on." You know, he might say stuff to his older brother or make comments, and I'm wondering where these comments are coming from. I grew up in West Hartford, you know, there was some stuff, but never to this degree, you know, and that was eighties, you know, early nineties. And I just, I'm really confused, and I'm just asking for help, please. Thank you.
Ma'am, before you go, I know you've already been working with Mr. Peterson and Dr. Wood, but on your way out, I'd like, if possible, for you to have a conversation with our chief operating officer, Charlene Russell Tucker, and she'll walk out with you. I want to make sure that you have all the information about what's been done so far on the issues you brought to our attention. Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. It's really important that you continue to advocate for your son, and we want you to be in school, and we want you to be happy in school, so we'll continue to support your efforts around making the work in the open choice setting for your community of residents.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Wynton Samuel.
First board meeting. That's how we lead by example, let our young people see how things work, so it's great that she brought her son. So I'm gonna respond to the parent that just spoke, because I've been working with her since August. So I'm kind of confused, Commissioner Wenzel, because when this issue occurred, and she's being nice, because it's her first board meeting, but this issue was brought to the attention of State Department of Education prior to school starting in August. I should know, I have the email. So this is about the racial, reducing racial isolation, because with these open choice programs, we are sending them to majority non-diverse schools, and in and of itself, that shouldn't be a problem. They get the money for the child of color, whether it's Bridgeport and Adam Taylor, this goes back to your comment about, about Bridgeport, kids can make ghettos in the Fairfield County. This is what happens when that mentality, those thought processes and stereotypes of kids of color, this is a direct result of this. So we are sending children of color to schools that are majority non-minority, and there is not an expectation or districts are being held accountable to treat all children equally or equitably regardless of their skin color. So it's not about, it's not integration just because you put black and brown kids in a classroom, that just means you have black and brown kids in a classroom. It's when you treat every child equitably and fair despite their skin color, which is integration. So there is a difference, and so this is a direct result, and my problem is, if I go back to a testimony that you had, Ms. Wenzel, in front of the legislature in 2016, context, when we sent the email to you and Commissioner Charlene Tucker, I think it was August 22nd, you referred the parent back here from Hartford, Ms. Kiana, to Adrian Wood, which investigated her allegations of racial tensions. Then the call came back from this department, says it was unsubstantiated. And so as a result, we were gonna force this child into the school, even though there's medical documentation that this seven-year-old has experienced such racial tensions that is having medical and physical and emotional trauma to the child. But because the State Department of Education reviewed this issue, the same issue, and said it was unsubstantiated, no. You spoke before legislators about a bill, Diane Wenzel, Commissioner, State Department of Education, and it was related to a bill about unsubstantiations. Commissioner Wenzel opposed the passage of this bill as unsubstantiated because unsubstantiated is defined not as a false allegation, let me make sure I'm saying, or that no deplorable action has occurred, but rather the claim, as a claim, which has not met the statutory definition. So the reason why I'm saying that is because you told, this, this, this office said you couldn't help her because it was unsubstantiated. But you said in a testimony just last year that just because something is unsubstantiated doesn't mean it didn't happen. So with that being said, I am requesting, because the mom, we're all trying to figure it out, this baby should not be out of school, seven years old, foundational critical years, K through three, we're talking critical, critical foundational years, because the adults don't want to address the elephant in the room. And the elephant in the room is you are sending these black and brown babies to districts that don't either want them or don't know how to treat them fairly. So the question is, if they can't take them off the choice list, and they don't get no more of the money, because you are paying people, and then they're trying to force her, force her to send them back there. And she's calling people every day, reaching out to help. She sent an email to Representative Brandon. So I'm asking you to once again, look at where you're sending these babies to, because there have been multiple complaints that these open choice schools that you are sending kids of color are not being treated fairly. And you're giving them the money, and we don't have a state budget, so we can't afford to pay people who don't want to educate all children equitably, because this district of Berlin received the money. Now, with that being said, I'm sure they had good intentions. So whether, I want to say it's unconscious bias or whatever is occurring, it's occurring because someone is allowing students to say this, no one's being held accountable, and now this baby can't. So the request on the table is, I'm asking that you follow up with her initial email from August 22nd. Her request to the open choice for Hartford was, "Can I get a tutor?" Give the child a tutor, we're the wealthiest district in the nation. If that black baby is cared about just like other non-minority children, there is no harm in giving this baby a child because you already allocated a per pupil amount. So the baby already has money, so you don't have to find the money for the child, because you already took the money. And you're not providing the service. And if what I know, when I don't go to Walmart, I don't pay them, they don't give me the service. I pay, I get. The district of Connecticut, I mean, the state of Connecticut has paid for this baby. Give the child a tutor so that we can figure out how we can get this child educated. And then in closing, I just want to say, I look on your efforts to deliver on the promises. You have enough meetings here to last a lifetime, so kudos to the board for meeting with different folk, but I don't see where you're addressing no state budget. Bridgeport's people are sending out letters, talking about closing schools, they're talking about no parents in the classroom. Parents have called me from different states. The Connecticut Parent Union doesn't have the capacity to go to these different cities and hear what's going on. You have an obligation to monitor what is happening at the state, at the local boards of education levels to ensure that no child is being discriminated against and no child is being denied an education as a result, excuse me, of no state budget. And we don't see that. And like the judge said in the CCJEF, I will repeat, the bump stops with you, this state board, when all else is failing. And all else is failing right now because we don't have a state budget. So I just believe, based on your appointments, that you have an obligation, based on the oath you all took, to ensure that all 500,000 of these children, regardless if they're black or white, rich or poor, that their needs are being met. And then on closing, I don't know how y'all gonna take kids from Puerto Rico. I'm getting calls about Puerto Rico, I don't know what to do, I'm not the state board, and they're saying, "We're gonna take the kids in, we barely provide proper services for English language learners for the kids we do have." We have districts talk about closing schools, school shortages. So all I'm saying is, you monitor these school districts who say that, I'm not saying they don't care about kids, but we don't take in more kids, which I'm thinking we will because we're a great state of Connecticut, that if you are going to take in children, that you are going to make sure these children are getting the services they need because you have agreed to take them. And at the same time, meet the needs of the current Connecticut residents. So that is what I'm saying, you have a job to do, and it's well beyond these meetings. So I would request also that next month, when we look at your commissioner's report, we should hear that there were discussions about the state board, that the no state budget, and then how are we going to ensure equity in all these schools, and that we need to re-monitor this racial isolation stuff because it's not working. And the bottom line is, if a city like Berlin, good intention, can't do it, they shouldn't get open choice money. This is beyond, and let's get this baby in school. So Commissioner Wenzel, you're the commissioner, you care about children, that young man deserves a fair chance at education, not another email saying, "We're gonna do the best we can" in a multi-billion dollar line item for education. Thank you very much.
You? Tom Strangfeller.
Good morning. Tom Strangfeller from Manchester, Connecticut. Like he said, he'll be seeing me from time to time just to pick up on Ms. Sandel's comments. There's still a call that this is really going on in schools today with this type of, I guess, racial bias or, you know, racism, does it, you know, occur at the dinner table at home because some boy shouldn't have to be going through that, because I remember being called the N-word from age six and even into adult years, and it still hurts. And it's just, it's just plain wrong, and I'm not just saying that as a indictment against white America, but sometimes I think white people of goodwill need to get off the sidelines and start speaking out to their friends in a nice way, maybe they'll listen to them better, and that it's not a black thing you wouldn't understand, because you do get angry after a while. I restrained myself, but after a while, stop it. We don't live in 1967 or 57 when I was just a young kid or, you know, pre-teen around the time of Dr. King's assassination. This is the 21st century, and no one should have to be called names going back to where you came from, or be treated like a second-class citizen, or Make America Great Again, or is it Make America White Again in certain ways. I mean, enough is enough. We're supposed to be the beacon of democracy for the world, we need to act like it, and not, number one, but know how to treat people. And I do pledge allegiance to the flag, but at the same time, the pledge, Star Spangled Banner is written by a slave owner, Francis Scott Key, had a slave with him at that time at Fort McHenry, and I'm gonna honor him, and I think his nephew fought for the Confederacy, and that's a flag I'll never honor, the Confederate stars and bars, because they didn't treat black soldiers as prisoners of war, they used to murder them or put them in hard labor or keep slaves from escaping north by keeping one out of 15 soldiers behind as patrols and everyone back during slavery. So that was wrong too, that this government upheld, including Franklin Pierce from New Hampshire, featured the Slave Act of 1950. So history has a way of repeating itself, but hopefully, new youth and others that we can fight against any type of scourge of racism, discrimination, sexism, and classism. And I'll say that again because I've experienced it, and it just angers me that this young man has to go through it. It's not right, and that's all I'll say on that. Going through history, I'll mention 1491, Columbus Day holiday coming up. He arrived in the West Indies, not the East Indies, and there was indigenous tribes, the Alara, the Karib, and one other tribe, and they were mistreated by his men and his policies. So I'll give him some due, we did take a risk, but he wasn't a nice man, and this is an anti-Italian, I know he's a hero to some people, to me, he was the greatest man, and that's all I'll say. But give credit where credit's due to non-European discoverers that came from West Africa, China, even Marco Polo brought back pasta from China, wasn't invented in Italy. And I'm just telling you, because the information's out there, even a book by a late author I met, that came before Columbus, that came out in 1976, it's still in its sixth edition. So there's no more excuses for teachers out there, there's not that type of literature. The Polynesians that sailed to, from Hawaii to New Zealand. So they were there before the British came in 1787. I would say in Australia, Darkin and I Am, the Aborigines, were there 40,000 years before the British came and, you know, I guess, took over that, you know, that country, and they're trying to deal with past vegetable racism there now, as well as New Zealand, what happened to Mirey on the British rule too, similar to what happened to indigenous tribes here in Connecticut. So we do need to learn from history, because the current commissioner came out 50 years ago, Thurgood Marshall was appointed to the Supreme Court, he died 23 years ago in 1993. So, you know, I'm a learner from that. Even schools today, the succession movement in education was an article in The Nation a few weeks ago, what was happening in Alabama, I think lawsuits are going around. So I'll end on this, to say that Connecticut is a good state. I don't know what our budget would be like, but all money needs to be spent equally in our school districts. And I think for board of education members, PTAs, to wake up and work for all the rights of students, no matter where you live or what neighborhood, because poverty has no color line and suffering. So let's do right and make this state, a state for all of us, under a constitutional law. Thank you.
Consideration of the minutes, may I have motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. A favor?
Aye.
Close. Next is item 5A. May I have motion for 5A? Second.
Morning. I am here this morning on behalf of New Britain High School, asking you to consider approving New Britain High School, one of the state's largest high schools, for entry in the commissioner's network. Yeah, there we go. This process with planning for New Britain High School started a year ago. It's part of making some changes in terms of how schools enter the network. We have talked extensively, I know we've talked a lot in committee, about schools needing time to plan with us as opposed to doing this process in a couple of weeks and coming forward to you. So we've been planning this for a little over a year now is when this process started. One of the things that we did in trying to refine and make this process even better each year is we met with Superintendent Sarah and Principal Pincero around January to ask some very pointed questions about the willingness of both the school and the district to make significant changes in order for this process to be successful. And we- And we, we really pressed them on some pointed issues around, what are you willing to do around curriculum? What are you willing to do around changing a master schedule? What are you willing to do around, um, providing professional development to change adult behaviors? What are you, and, and I have to tell you, um, every single thing we asked, they were more than willing to do, which is not always the case, as you know. Uh, we have worked and, and I have worked with, with Superintendent Sarah since, um, she came on board, and she is one of the superintendents that I, I work with that I can, um, just tell you very honestly. Very dedicated, very passionate about the work she does, and frankly, very easy to work with. Um, wants the best for her, her, her students, she lives in New Britain, um, she, she knows New Britain, she works very well, she's a long time.
You pronounce it so professionally.
Would you, uh, that's the way it should be, right?
Well, that's the way I hear it from people who live there, yes.
So then, good, then I'm echoing what you've already heard. Um, so I'll, I'll speed it up, in other words, I, I, um, a couple of quick things that I want to point out about the plan that you have before you. Um, and, and I think this is significant, and, and, and one of the pieces of feedback I think that we have in committee, um, is, is the level of concern around the number of bodies that you see with some of the plans, and making sure that we have the sustainability conversation upfront with districts. There is not a single body, um, as part of this plan. And this is the first plan that does not have additional staff to help turn the school around. And we'll get into some of the details around that, um, shortly. I've already mentioned that this is one of, um, the state's largest, uh, high schools. You have in front of you, and I'm not going to read all of this to you, you have the turnaround committee membership list. You also have, uh, the demographics for New Britain High School. When you look at the plan, there are two main approaches to this. The first is a career pathway development, where the vision is that every single school, every single, um, child attending the school has the opportunity to be college and career ready or to go in other fields. And one of the changes here is to get that process started in ninth grade. Not wait until junior year or senior year to get kids thinking about what it is they want to do and get them ready for that. That is one of the significant things. Another thing that, that this plan addresses, and I want to thank Estella for, uh, connecting us, not related to New Britain High School, but another high school in the network, to, um, Daisy DeFilippis at Nagatuck Valley. Because what we were able to do there is connect that community college with another high school in the network. The difference is, we did that at the, almost the end of that school's time, we're doing this here right from the beginning. So I, I think that is significant, I want to point that out. The other piece here, um, in the instructional, uh, building of this plan is around the instructional platform and willing to work with teachers to change the way they teach students. I can't say it any simpler than that. That is a huge piece, uh, of this plan that you have in front of you. There are a couple other, uh, pieces, including, um, working with attendance works, and you will see multiple partners in the plan, and I'll address that in a second. I do want to shout out Joe Vercheck, who works, um, in New Britain. He has been, uh, in the forefront of the chronic absenteeism work with both Charlene's office, Akari Sullivan, when we went to Washington, he was there with us to present. He plays a crucial role, as does attendance works in the New Britain plan that you have in front of you. As we took the time to plan this, the things that are in that plan will have a direct impact on the accountability index. And the reason that is significant is because we had time to plan it correctly. So the things that you see in the plan, such as addressing the academics, the chronic absenteeism, attacking the restorative practices, getting them ready for college and career, every single thing in that plan will have a positive impact on the accountability index for that school. The reason that we were able to do this and make this alignment is because we had time to do it. Again, I can't emphasize enough how important it has been to have a year of planning before we bring a school to the state board. Couple of quick things here under talent, and again, you have all this in front of you. One of the big things is that we are going to have to work with adults and provide professional development to adults to inform their practices on a regular basis. And, and we're not just talking about teachers, we're talking about the principal. We're talking about guidance counselors, we're talking about working with students and parents. All that is built into this plan in a way that makes it sustainable. Because when the money goes, as you know, you oftentimes run into problems around, how do we sustain? If we've hired people, if we put a ton of people on the money, what happens? There's none of that here. This is built purposely for sustainability. Once the, the relationship ends, once the money is gone, they will be able to continue to move forward based on the things that we have provided them. That's why we built it the way we built it. The idea here is to have a high, a high impact on instruction. And again, that goes back to giving teachers the professional development that they need in order to have a bigger impact, uh, on classroom instruction. Under, uh, culture and climate, I just wanted to highlight again, uh, working with the school, working with the district. Um, they have a currently, they have a relationship with the Nellie Fay, Nellie May Foundation, um, that they're working with to do community involvement, parent engagement. Uh, we will continue to work with them for, uh, restorative practices. In fact, my office has been working with the high school for the past six months before, um, leading up to the development and, and, um, bringing this plan forward to you, so we have built that in for that work to continue, uh, with New Britain High School as well. Uh, under operations, one of the most, uh, significant things, there we go, uh, that you will see in this plan is identifying experts to help the school and the principal and his leadership team come up with a master schedule that meets the needs of kids. As you know, uh, it, it's tough enough to come up with a schedule at the elementary level sometimes. High school is a completely different, um, animal where you have all kinds of moving parts. And so that is why you see in the plan, we have a partner specifically working with the school on the master schedule. We, we have multiple partners in here, and I, I am well aware and cognizant of that. But I want to make sure you all understand that the reason we identify the people that we have identified to work with New Britain High School is because they have a track record in the area in which we have tapped them for. We have folks in here, attendance works, nationally known for their work around chronic absenteeism, as you already know. We have partners in here that have worked with Bloomfield High School, one of the biggest turnaround stories in the state in the past few years. So these partners that we selected, were not selected, um, on a whim. We did a lot of research, making sure we align the school to the right people to do specific things for New Britain High School. The key to getting that right is going to be the meetings that we have once a month, where we will bring all the partners together, principal leadership team and my office, to make sure that the work is moving forward in the areas in which we brought the partners to the table to address from the beginning. So I want to turn it over to Superintendent Sarah to say a few words, and then I'd like you to hear from, uh, Principal Pincera before we open it up for conversation.
Thank you, good morning, I'm Nancy Sarah, um, I'm a lifer in New Britain. Um, uh, and I'm the proud superintendent for ten thousand students in New Britain. Uh, first off, thank you, um, to the chairman, Commissioner Wenzel and all the board members for having us here this morning, um, to speak. I was told I have five minutes, and sometimes I tend to go on, so someone's timing me, I'm sure. Um, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm now about one and a half years into, uh, this journey of superintendent. And I will say, it wasn't a job that I, I started with, I was a teacher, I was an administrator. I was pulled into central office to help make the changes that I was, I was, uh, that I made in my, my, um, school as principal. And so this journey has evolved over twenty-four years. Um, and my vision really has never changed from the day I stepped foot in the classroom twenty-five years ago. Uh, and it is pursuing excellence, uh, for every, every New Britain student, no exceptions, that's it. That is who I am, that's the, the drum I've been beating for the last twenty-five years. And so maybe happily for many, when I, when I took the seat as superintendent, they already knew who I was and, and what I believed in. And every action I take is around student-centered, um, achievement and ensuring that every student, regardless of label, has the same shot and will graduate on time. So that's a little bit about who I am. Um, I've spent the last year and a half, and I want to say the last three years, but I did a lot of underground work before I took the seat as superintendent. And I used to say to my staff, "We're building an infrastructure." And even though we can't raise up this infrastructure right now around accountability and evidence-based practice, when I become superintendent, we're gonna raise that up. So the work really started a few years ago, I will say this past year and a half, has been about building infrastructures in New Britain. Um, we talked a little bit about partnership here. The, the beauty of New Britain is we have invested, invested people in our town. Many, many nonprofit organizations that want to come to the table. What I've noticed over twenty-five years, however, is the, um, the strategy wasn't there. There wasn't a, a, one, one, one place where all of these partners could come through the doorway and we were able to leverage those strategies well. So when you talk about multiple partnerships, you have to understand that for the last year and a half, I've been building this doorway where partners are coming in and we are leveraging partners in a strategic way that is accountability and evidence-based. Um, I believe fully in educating the whole child, so it's a good day in New Britain, I will say. We have a mayor who is very invested in the students and the children of New Britain. Multiple community partners who are going to come to the table. And, and for us, we understand that all students can. Our biggest struggle has been helping adults, build capacity of our adults so they too understand that every student can. We, we come at it with a growth mindset, and I always say, "We are the best at getting better and we're not there yet." And, um, that is where we're coming from. I, everything that Mr. Nesmith has just spoken to, um, is our beliefs. ESA, now in place, uh, has a focus on whole child development, as do we. Um, and getting our high school with twenty-six hundred students in that high school, um, in a place where they are afforded the opportunity, every one of them, because we have adults who are learning and growing that every student can, um, that every one of those students has the opportunity to graduate on time. Our graduation rate has been steadily climbing, we work very, very hard on that, we have a long way to go. Attendance Works has been with us now for five years, so they are really more like our own. Um, it's not even an external partner anymore, as are some of the others. And we do need that work around helping, um, build a high school schedule that ensures that all students have opportunities, not only for their core courses, which are critical, but for those elective courses as well. We have worked very hard over the last year and a half to, to resurrect or bring back our career tech ed. We, um, just received a national award as a distinguished academy, there's only ten in the nation, for Academy of Finance, which is four years old, and we are just embarking on now an IT academy. We believe firmly that every student at New Britain High School should have some sort of work-based learning experience. I think for us, the biggest thing is helping to build capacity of our adults. We know our kids can, we know that. It's helping to build all of our adult learners, our teachers, all staff, to help those students along that path. That is where this partnership with the commissioner's office is critical for New Britain. Um, I have all confidence, I'm very excited. Um, we did a lot of work around, um, looking for the right administration over at New Britain High School. It is a brand-new team of six, very invested, um, they travel like a pack. It's a wonderful thing to see, there isn't a board meeting, they're not attending. Um, and they work together for the betterment of the students, but they have a big job. It's a very big job to help shift mind, mindsets of adults. So I'm gonna turn it over now to Mr. Pincera and Mr. Nesmith, if there's something I missed, let me know. It was very nice to talk to you, thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Sarah, and thank you for having me today, I'm humbled. And truly, um, I have chills listening to both Mr. Nesmith and Superintendent Sarah speak about this plan because when you're developing it, you're, you're, you're in it, you're, you're researching, you're looking at the best practices, but when you hear it said, like it was previously said, I'm thrilled to be here and I can't wait to, uh, get the work started. That being said, I've been in New Britain for eighteen years, fifth year as an administrator, second year as a high school principal. In my heart of hearts, um, I like to win. I have passion, um, from an athletic background. I know what Nancy Sarah's vision is, and I'm very willing to carry this through, um, right to the end, so I'm thrilled. I firmly believe that every child can succeed regardless of socioeconomic status and demographics. I mean really nothing when you look at it, every child that is in our school can make progress. And if there's an administrator in the state that doesn't believe that, then, then there's a problem. Every child in our school can reach a, a goal, so I just wanted to throw that out there. In order for our students to be successful, I firmly believe that they need to be engaged. Student engagement is my overall goal of the high school. And in order to get students engaged, we truly need staff engaged, and we need to reach the families. We're falling short in that department. We need to engage families on an ongoing basis and communicate effectively and making sure our messaging is, is similar both at the district level and at the building level. So I'm thrilled to get that, uh, started as well. In a data-driven business, we know what's important, if the data didn't, if the data's not there, we can't prove it. But I like to call it a student-centered business. Every decision that I make at the high school with Mrs. Sarah, I make sure that it's student-centered and it's good for kids. So, um, I, I just wanted to, uh, point one thing out. When Mr. Nesmith spoke about the idea that the staff will not be, and the commissioner's network would not be used for extra staff, that's the first thing that came to mind with me, was sustainability. We have the adults, we have the content experts right inside the school, and we need to make sure those people have the tools to get us to that next level, so I'm thrilled with by bringing on external partners, and I'm confident that we're gonna get that done. So once, um, these funds, uh, potentially go away, we are ready and we can build it up. Without commissioner's network, we have a projected graduation rate of close to eighty percent for this, for last year's, uh, four-year cohort. It was fifty-two percent not six years ago. We're trending and we're excited about it. So I'm, thank you for having me today, and I'm thrilled to get the work started.
Question?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you again, um. In reading what you plan to do, it seems to me you're really changing the culture of the high school. That's the, the, because you're changing different components, but it is the culture. What concerned me the most was really the fact that, um, students in board are not engaged in the classroom. And, um, to tell somebody who's knowledgeable in your subject that what you're doing is not effective can be very difficult and people will feel very defensive. I've been there as a participant where I realized that I had this illustrious PhD, but I was not reaching my students. And I remember crying, crying because I realized I needed to do better. And it took me a while, so that's part of my question, my first question is, how do you, what is the approach to changing that culture and involving the teachers and saying, "It's not that you're bad, it's that you can do better." And by doing better, your students will learn more and there will be, um, you know, greater accomplishment and greater, um, results.
That's a phenomenal question, and, and as many of you know, at the secondary level, we know we have adults that are really, really good at content. They know the content, which is phenomenal, and that's important for our kids. However, when kids come to high school, the content isn't enough to keep them engaged. So by having the high-impact, uh, coaching, starting in mathematics, year one, we know that that side-by-side coaching, uh, and professional development that's provided, we know that those teachers will get the necessary resources and skill sets to make sure that they do engage students. Now, it's, it's easy to say, but you're right, some people take it personally. I'm, I, I know my content, these kids should come ready. Well, they're not, and we have to do more, and that means reaching the whole child, hands-on, by the, uh, instructional platform and career path form rails that you see on there, hands-on. Um, instruction is the only way to go i- in my, in my, uh, in my brain. And I look at this every single day and I say, when I'm at a professional development and I'm bored as a forty-two-year-old, what do you think a sixteen and a seventeen-year-old is thinking? So make it exciting, and that means our kids are gonna get into the career pathways and they're gonna choose that IT academy, and they're gonna choose that Academy of Finance. And we're gonna provide those internships because school is more, as you know, than just listening and learning.
So you're gonna have, eh, in-depth activities with the teachers to ensure that they, uh, you know, it will not be a, a, you know, one-time, professional development will be continued.
No, this is, um, fully embedded throughout the, uh, three-year plan. Matter of fact, it's, it's a similar plan to our English language, uh, development where we look at percentages of teacher talk versus student talk. We want more students doing. I walk in the classrooms all the time, "Mr. Pincera, I'm sorry, it's noisy." I'm glad it's noisy if students are engaged and they're still a student.
I'm glad it's noisy if students are engaged and there's still student discourse. So yes, that, to answer your question, that is correct.
Okay. And the second question is, you're, you're working with Central Connecticut State University because you, you mentioned the partnership, is that, is that true?
Yes, uh, it, we have, um, uh, again, I can't stress how important, what a great day in New Britain. We have a president, um, from CCSU, who, we've been saying for years, we need a clear pathway. She and I have met more now than I ever even knew the former president. Dr. Toro is very, very invested in our New Britain students. She's very, and, and, and her vision is that CCSU's campus is for those students of New Britain first. They're, and maybe she's just saying it to me, but it makes me feel good. That pathway is strong, um, totally, she is invested. We, um, and the one thing I didn't mention, and this is the unromantic part of the job, but when I was doing my rebuilding, we created a central office. Um, one of our offices is the talent office, and that talent office, um, has designated administrators who provide support to building principals directly. So similar to Waterbury who has an ILD or, but we have never before had an opportunity for, um, a way to help our principals on the ground. So I wanted to speak to that point of not just accountability, but helping, leading by example, that change is possible. It's slow, but it's possible. And then we have also a partnership office, and that's been a wonderful thing. Our partnership office, we have taken on so many interns from CCSU who are now working with us. Um, we are working on having our own students, um, going through the pipeline for education so they can come back, and all the students know, I expect them to come back if they're going into education to give back to the town that's giving so much to them. So yes, the partnership is very strong with CCSU.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, mention about the personalized learning, the career pathways. Um, we all know that personalized learning is where it's at, and that's how I engage students, no matter what you're doing.
Now, can you pull your mic closer?
I see it every single day in my job. So I was curious, is that existing now, and, or where is that as far as really setting up, you know, four years of pathways for students, no matter what they wanna go into? Because I think every high school should be doing that. I think that's what we're missing out, because then it gives kids a purpose, gives them a reason to be engaged. Why do I need this math class? Could, you know, it makes the connection, so I'm glad to hear that, but I'm just curious where you are in that and how you're gonna do it.
Absolutely. So when Superintendent Sarah came through, a lot of the, you know, during some budget times, a lot of superintendents were quick to cut areas like automotive and manufacturing. Matter of fact, she built up the areas of automotive manufacturing and culinary, which is a, 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 a great little, uh, uh, side, side, um, program that when our students are in the community and they're cooking for community partners and they're cooking for board meetings, that's the real work. We have students in-
I, I like that, cooking for board meetings.
We invite you, they are amazing, our chefs are amazing.
Uh, so as far as, um, in the development, right now, in our program of studies, we have basic career pathways, but, uh, with, uh, high schools that work in their expertise, they'll be able to, to develop, um, the specific career pathways. So when a student comes in from eighth grade, they already, they know in eighth grade, okay, I'm gonna take, say, um, culinary pathway. They will know, um, by the first year where exactly they're going to, uh, take their courses. So right now, it's not fully established, uh, full transparency, but it's, it's part of the plan.
And if I can just add as well, uh, one of my, and again, New Britain has learned to do a lot with a little, and so everything we do, we call reimagining, because we don't have existing, we have no additional money, but we're gonna reimagine how we do this. And we have allocated funds, um, so that every, I would like every junior in any pathway and all juniors who maybe don't take a pathway to have a work-based learning experience. The dollars will come from me and I will pay them directly if our businesses can afford to, but they need to have that real-life experience and to your point, the application.
Yep, I was just gonna ask that, that's the second question about the internships or whatever you wanna call it, work-based learning is again, key to making it real.
And we're even looking within our own ins, uh, organization because there are just so many places that our juniors can work right within the school district. We've got HR, we've got all of these offices, and so we're gonna be employing a lot of our own students.
That's great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other?
Can I ask about, uh, the chronic absenteeism number? Um, you know, I know it's tough when you have a leadership change.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I love your plan, and, you know, the key to a lot of this is stability. I mean, when I look at what Bloomfield did, you know, I don't recall if they were part of things like this, but you have an opportunity to get supports. But when you have a superintendent change, I mean, leadership still boils down to, in my mind, one person. So I, you know, I wish you a lot of luck with that. But I recall not long ago, when Superintendent Cooper was on board, that we were modeling and emulating some of what he was doing to reduce chronic absenteeism. And maybe the numbers that I was looking at was for the whole district and not just the high school. But this number seems to be a lot higher than I am used to looking at. So, wha, what, I know we've had a leadership change. Joe, I don't know how long you've been principal, but, but wha, what's, is, I, I mean, I'm assuming that number has reversed and grown, and, and why is it as high as it is?
Do you want to go first or I'll go?
Yeah, I can take that. So right now, um, if you look over the past few years, it's been about a third, around thirty percent. Extremely high. We've looked at, um, we've looked at a two-mile, uh, walking distance in the high school in itself. And as you know, in, in New England, you know, that's a, that's a pretty long walk, it's a long walk. So we're investigating things like that as far as trying to help with chronic absenteeism. Uh, Joe Babercheck, which Mr. Nesmith mentioned earlier, he's our attendance officer. He's been doing a lot of work, not only with, uh, Attendance Works, but he's also been coming into our attendance meetings on a weekly basis to make sure we have a platform to not only, um, hit our tier-two students, because that's when we have to make sure we get them before they are, uh, fully chronic, but making sure that our associate principals and our community partners are on the same page with making sure our kids, uh, are getting to school. And again, it goes back to engaging families and making it important in after-school activities and hands-on activities for them to come to school. So I agree, it, it is a high number, um, but we, we are, we are working on it.
And, I'm sorry, and I was just gonna follow up from a district perspective. It's trending, and we, we can see this. I probably don't even need a mic, probably not. Um, we have ninety-five, ninety-six percent attendance. We have very low chronic absence through the elementary schools, right? And so we have to look at this as, uh, what's the root cause? Why are our numbers increasing as we get to middle school for middle school? And, and part of it's that normal progression of students aging and puberty and all of that hits, and life, there's a whole lot more in life than the teacher loving you. And so we understand that, but we know that the critical factor is engaging our families. And, and I don't mean token engagement where, where parents are coming out for PTA meetings, or not that they're not important, or to come out on the family fun nights. It's truly, and, and so we have to meet our families where they're at, no different than we're doing for our students. So in this partnership office that we've created, we are working with the community now to open a welcoming center, a place where our families can come to get their needs met. Because our families' needs, they need to worry and make sure that their basic needs are taken care of before they put school as the number-one priority. So it's on us as New Britain to help our families get what they need so that the students get what they need. So it's, it's, it's never a simple answer, and it takes years to develop this culture with families. But we are, we are working on that.
Thank you. I'd like to just follow up on it. Is there a correlation, a positive correlation between distance walked and absenteeism?
Yes.
Absolutely.
And I, and I will say to that point also, the one thing that we've done now, we have the two-mile. And, and again, we are all, I mean, we are all watching our dollars, and transportation is very expensive. So what we've set up now is for those students who are two miles or, or one-point-nine, or two-point-one miles away, we are having them walk to the nearest bus stop, meaning they're gonna be walking away, they are getting on buses now to come in. So we found, we don't have, and there's always space on buses, we know that. And we have people out there with a ticker counting kids on buses. So yes, we are on that as well.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's a, it's a different approach, I think it's one. I mean, if you, this is a, a sustainable model. You know, if you're really changing how the, how the instructions delivered, culture and the organization, not just changing people, but people who really wanna be there and do the job. I just applaud you for taking this approach.
Other question? Are you keeping the thirty-minute periods? That seems awfully short today.
They are thirty-minute lunches. They're not thirty-minute periods, they're forty-eight-minute period.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if it was, uh, miss, uh-
I might, I might have misread.
Thirty-minute lunches from forty-five last year, which, as you know, extra fifteen minutes in lunch?
It's not much time, though.
Thank you. This is, this is great. Um, and, and to Joe's question, I, I looked and saw that on your committee, there's one person who's coordinating community partnerships, is that it? And, uh, so two parts. How many community partnerships are there in, in community-based organizations in this plan? And I think there is a point or an age where kids start knowing they are poor, right? And school does not become a priority anymore.
That's correct.
And so, as it relates to providing resources for the parents, what resources are those community organizations providing for those kids who now understand the depths and misery of poverty? And now hasn't, they have not prioritized education?
Well, I will say, we've got, um, can you, can you hear me without a microphone?
No, it's better if you're like-
It's the people behind you.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I'll go after him.
Okay. Uh, we have many community partners. We have been very close with Opportunities Industrial Center is one of our first and foremost partners.
Industrial Center?
Yes, Ms. Paula Fox, and she was actually on the turnaround committee with us.
Okay.
As well as our YWCA. We, I mean, we have countless, uh, people who are reaching out and, and I'm just gonna speak very briefly about, um, again, we've just received national recognition for the last few years on our summer enrichment programs, starting in first grade. So what we're doing with our first-grade students who we are already, uh, declared as substantially deficient, or we know that they are already hitting those numbers of chronic absence, we believe, and our theory of action is, if we extend their day and we extend their year, we change that trajectory for that student. And so we now, um, and that's with all of our community partners. We have a very, we have, during the summer and after school, seventeen partners that come to the table to take care of our children. We have six hundred kids that we are following closely from first grade up to eighth grade. And Mr. Pincher can speak a little bit about the Mindset Academy, one of our new academies. Those are those very students that we recognized at five are the ones who still need the support and the love. And I say, but the more people hug them, the better we are. We are very cognizant, and our community partners have never been stronger or more strategic. I meet with them weekly on these issues of making sure that this core group of students get what they need so we can change the family tree, actually, and for that family.
Okay, just asking, follow-up, or?
Sure.
So a lot of times, those, those resources and, and those organizations create situations where, um, it allows kids and families to function highly in poverty without doing things to take them out of poverty.
To take them out of poverty.
Right? And so, so are, are those efforts, um, and I know you talked about, uh, Finance Academy, which I think is great.
Mm-hmm.
Are those efforts pointed to getting rid of poverty or, or, or how to function well in poverty?
Absolutely, and, and again, I look at our high school beginning in sixth grade, and I say, sixth grade is the kindergarten for high school. And, and that is when we have young adults where they can make those changes. We have advisory and SSP for all of our sixth-through-eighth graders talking specifically around personal finance. We are going to be putting in personal finance for, it will be a mandatory course for every ninth-through-twelfth grader at New Britain High School. Absolutely, it's not, it's not settling for what is and just being happy within that. It's helping them move beyond what is.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Sorry, I just wanted to, um, echo, I think, what, uh, Mr. Shreiber was saying, and I'm really excited, optimistically excited about, um, this plan that you've put forward. I'm interested to see how well it works out with this planning year. I mean, it really seems to have created at least a plan that looks fantastic on paper. You have articulated at least very well, and I'm, I'm excited. Um, so I, I just wanted to, to express that. And I also wanted to just thank you in terms of that first bullet on how New Britain, uh, high school benefit in saying that it's the academic preparation for future careers and college and post-secondary training opportunities, and not using the word "or." Language is really important, um, and, uh, just the importance of not deciding or tracking that it's either one or the other or the other. Um, so appreciate that, that holistic look and, and that there's a path for everyone to be. That's incredible.
Other questions, candidates?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Forward to-
Hearing from you again.
Thank you, thank you very much.
For the New Britain team, except, and, I just wanted to contextualize as well to the board how important this partnership is, um, through the Commissioner's Network, and why particularly New Britain and New Britain High School as we look at this, um, next iteration of the network, how much it matters. The governor chose to announce his budget proposal in New Britain this year. A lot of why he did that is because the school funding portion of our state budget, which is so critical, um, we, we needed to bring some attention to districts like New Britain who have been systematically let, left out of funding increases for the last decade. I think it's about a decade, right? Kathy, or is it eight years? How long since we used actual enrollment as part of the formula?
About eight.
About eight years, okay. So for about eight years, the actual student enrollment in our district has not played a part in how much funding our districts get. During that time period, the vast majority of Connecticut districts have lost children and continue to get the same or more funding. Um, so I'm all for more funding for everybody, but, um, it also left districts like New Britain in a situation where they have more and more and more students, um, often students presenting with, um, a lot of significant challenges, uh, new to the district, perhaps new to Connecticut, perhaps new to our country, and they got no additional funding for those students. So the, um, enrollment was not affecting, has not been affecting, the amount of money that our school districts get. Um, the Commissioner's Network, obviously, we've worked hard to make sure that this is not all about the money. But the resources matter tremendously in our districts who have in effect been getting less money while serving more kids. And we are so proud of New Britain and the grit and the determination and New Britain High School and what you're putting forward. So I wanted to take a moment to spotlight that. I'm also very impressed in the chronic absenteeism movement. Charlie and I are lucky to be able to visit New Britain frequently. You've been one of our, um, early adopters with the Attendance Work, uh, efforts, and we get to visit often. Last year during the budget mitigation session, the transportation funding, is it, was it during the budget mitigation or the year before?
It was, um, actually during the prior session.
The prior session, okay. So it's two years now since we've been giving our school districts money to transport their students. So transportation to school is required by law, um, and will, you know, districts need to do that whether or not the state gives them money to do it. But it's been two years now since we've, the state, since the legislature has been able to give money, you know, appropriate money to our school districts to transport. So the fact that during a time where fewer resources were flowing to address the issue of transportation, New Britain found a way to, um, use existing resources to get more kids on buses to school, you know, kudos to you, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll invite you to dinner when our kids go.
I guess I've got a request here that we go from five A to ten A, so if that's okay with the board? Item ten A, definitely. Not seven A, I'm sorry.
Head G, yep.
Morning, Chairman Keller.
Morning, Vice Chair Lopez, and good morning, every, everyone else at the stakeboard and, uh, members, and good morning, Commissioner as well. Um, thank you for this, not a matter of formality sometimes, so pardon that. Um, thank you for this opportunity to, um, to explain our state assessment, achievement, and growth results from the most recent, um, year. Uh, this is not new information in the sense that we have released, this was released publicly. The SAP results went out in August, Moda Balance went out, uh, in July, and then final results are in September. So these are, these are public results. What I'm hoping to do here briefly is to give you sort of, frame it in terms of where we are and how, how we've done over the past few years. But then, more importantly, spend some time discussing what are we doing about it? And so, I am not alone today. I have representatives from two districts who are here to sort of share with you what they are doing and why they are seeing the results that they're seeing, which are a little different from what the state as a whole is seeing. But I just wanted to mention that I'm not here by myself. I know you always ask me, so what are you doing about it? So, I have come prepared this time.
Prepared, achieved.
So, before I launch into the results themselves, I just want to give a shout out to staff in performance, particularly the assessment group under the leadership of our Bureau Chief, Abe Crist. And I say that because there is a lot to actually administer the assessments effectively. And there are computer-delivered assessments for Smarter Balance, there are paper pencil for SAT. So, I don't have, I don't have a slide on this, but I do want to give a shout out to that, to that crew in performance that really makes sure that during that window, we are all hands on deck trying to help districts have a smooth administration, lots of communication back and forth with districts. And the, the proof to me is in the pudding in that we are now meeting the ninety-five percent participation rate benchmark for all our assessments. So, whether it be Smarter Balance or the SAT, we're meeting the ninety-five percent benchmark. For grades three through eight on Smarter Balance, we're hitting that ninety-five percent participation rate for all student groups. So, every one of those student groups is hitting ninety-five percent. I mean, that's, that's pretty, pretty commendable. In SAT, with regard to the student groups, we have a little work to do, but I think, I think we're, overall, we're definitely hitting the ninety-five percent. So, I just wanted to make sure I acknowledge, acknowledge them in this, in this work. So, there we go. So, I want to keep, again, my piece as brief as possible. I'm gonna be discussing four things, give you a sense of the achievement, which is, where are, where is kids' performance this year, and how is that trending? I'll also give you a sense of the cohort growth information. This is matched student cohort growth, which is, for Smarter Balance, where we're looking, kids who were in third grade the year prior, did they meet our growth targets? How much did they grow from one year to the next? Because if they grow to our targets, then they're gonna reach proficiency in future years. We have a couple of districts here, and then we'll also share next steps. To understand the Smarter Balance results, it's important to understand the notion of a vertical scale. And I'll take a minute to just kind of set the stage on this. A vertical scale simply means that it is one common yardstick that we use for tests across all grades. So, if you look on the left-hand side, now, this is the ELA vertical scale. If you look on the left-hand side, the scale ranges from twenty-one hundred to twenty-eight hundred. You notice that every test has its own range within that. And you also notice that as you go higher on the scale, on the grades, the ranges get progressively higher. All that means is that you have to score higher to keep your level of achievement. And to improve, you have to increase in your scale score points. Now, you can think of height is, is a good example to think of. Like, if you, height is one scale, like, if you, if you're doing inches versus, versus metrics. So, let's, let's take our, our system here. So, when you're measuring in inches, you know, you measure a kid who's eight-year-old, you measure and you say, this kid is thirty-nine inches. And a year later, when you measure that kid, you're still measuring on that same scale. So, you can plot from one year to the next how much the kid's score has changed. So, that's what really a vertical scale is. You're mapping tests of greater difficulty onto the same scale so that you can make inferences like, how did this kid grow from one year to the next? Okay?
And, and as you, on the right, it starts at twenty-one fifty.
Oh, that's probably a, it's probably a typo on my part.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if the length of each bar.
No, that's, that's, that's just a typo. That's a typo on my part. Pardon that. Shouldn't be the case in the other ones.
And is it the case, and are the, are the lengths the same?
The lengths are a little bit different. It's, it's, that's not a major, that's not a concerning issue. I think what, what the thing to pay attention to is that those shaded areas within each grade represent the achievement levels. So, when a kid's score is twenty-three hundred in grade three, in ELA, we would say that kid is functioning in level one. If it's twenty-four hundred, they would be in level two. So, but if you notice that if you get a twenty-four hundred in grade three, and if you get a twenty-four hundred in grade four, you're not gonna be in level one, uh, level two anymore. You're gonna be in level one because the challenge in the next grade is, is that much higher.
Can you, you just define the colors?
Oh, the colors are, the four colors represent the four levels of achievement. The bottom, the bottom band is level one, the, I'm not good with colors. So, bottom rust brown is level one, the orange is level two, the green is level three, and the dark green is level four. Our, our desired performance level is at least level three. So, we need students to be at least at level three. The other thing to think, to remember is that scales are continuous measures of student performance. Meaning that, you know, you can say a kid is a level two, is performing at level two, but that is a, that is kind of a starter for understanding how a child is doing. The score is the most precise measure of where a kid is. Because it is really different whether you're on the lower part of level two or in the upper part of level two. It, it does make a difference. And the way we do our achievement index under ESSA, we are using the scale score to do that, that performance index.
And I'd like to add that an important improvement in the assessment system we have now is that the assessment system was designed, two really important improvements. The assessment, assessment system was designed to staircase in this way, whereas our previous assessment system, the CMT, was not. So, it is much more meaningful than an artificial scale that was applied upon our old system. This is actually embedded in the actual assessment itself. Additionally, because these levels were set to really demonstrate progress toward college and career readiness and readiness for the demands of double life after high school, the levels are meaningful. So, they're not artificial levels put onto a test the way we had in the past. And our old task also was set at the levels where at a lower level of mastery to get into the desired area. So, these, if the student is performing in level three or four, they are on track to be ready for life after high school. And so, it is much more meaningful than what we had previously. And the narratives that go with it to explain it to parents, I think, are well crafted. Our team rewrote the ones that.
Student report.
Yeah, the student report that came from the assessment itself because it was a little bit too assessment-ish. And now, they're a little more parent-friendly. And I, I think that we really are helping parents understand that the assessment is plotting meaningful progress for their children.
There we go. So, what is on this page is average performance for each of the grades for the past three years, which is the bars, the lines on the bottom. So, for example, you're looking at the green, I think I have a pointer here, too. The green line on the bottom represents the performance from fourteen, fifteen, the blue one from fifteen, sixteen, and the red one is from sixteen, seventeen. So, the inference I would make from this is, on average, our students are performing just around the proficiency cutoff in the, in the grades. Our performance improved slightly from fourteen, fifteen to fifteen, sixteen, and maybe decreased a little bit from fifteen, sixteen to sixteen, seventeen. But you see sort of the general area in which our performance is hovering for English Language Arts. The blue line on the top, this blue line is our target for this average performance. So, that's where we want the average performance to be. Because an average, as you know, means some students are above the average, some students are below the average. So, we want that average to be solidly in level three, not just minimally above level three. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so that's what the blue thing, the blue diamond line represents. That's where we want the achievement to be on average. So, we're a little ways away from that. And while this might look small, I have to say, this is a challenging climb. This is not a simple climb. It's a challenging climb. We've got, we've got our work cut out, cut out for us. And in our ESSA plan, this is what we have promised to close, not just for certain kids, but for all kids.
Can I ask this question?
Sure.
So, I mean, just be dense this morning. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Well, we could pull your mic.
Sure, I'm sorry. Okay. So, the, the line itself, so if we looked at grade eight,
Mm-hmm.
that point represents the, the average score of our students?
Our students, that's correct.
Okay. So, I'm trying to understand, because that's really high on the chart, but yet we have a big rust section on the bottom, right?
Because all, all I've done here is I've zoomed into a portion of the chart. So, you notice the dark green?
Gotcha.
You don't even, I'm having trouble with this one.
Do you see that right now? Yeah. Yeah. So, the, the line, the colors are just sort of trying to show where that, where that band sits.
Yeah. So, notice you don't see the dark green in grade eight. I've just zoomed into a part of the chart to illustrate that, that area of the chart. Otherwise, it gets to be too bunched up, and you can't really see it clearly. So, I mean, our average performance is sort of hovering around that. So, now, what I've done is, the target is still there, the blue line is still there. So, you know what we're aiming for. Now, I'm grouping the performance of our high-need students as compared to our non-high-need students. So, high-need students are students who are either an English learner, a student with a disability, or a student eligible for free reduced-price meals, are students from our low-income families. So, what you see, and this is, this is interesting in, in many ways. So, let me make a few observations that obviously there is a gap. You see, the high-need students, on average, are performing actually in the lower part of level two. Whereas, our non-high-need students are actually exceeding the target in, in almost all our grades except for grade eight. Now, this is representing one year of performance, which is our most recent year. This is the math scale. We can skip this. The concept is the same, but it's for mathematics. So, here is math performance. Math performance, on average, has increased in each of the past three years. So, when you look at where we started in fourteen, fifteen, going up to fifteen, sixteen, and then up to sixteen, seventeen, which is the red line. But on average, you'll notice that in grades three and four, we are now bordering, on average, getting to proficiency on average. We still have a ways to go to get to our target. But in the other grades, it's definitely, we're not even getting close to proficiency. So, one of the inferences I'll, I'll make in the, later on here is middle school mathematics instruction is one of our challenge areas. This is a foundational mathematics. Middle school mathematics carries you through, and that is one of our, our big challenge areas. Now, I've mentioned this in the past, but this, these charts to me make it really, really clear. So, let me break this out in the next one. So, this does the same thing for EL, uh, mathematics as I did for ELA, breaking out the achievement by high-needs students, you know, our high-needs students and our non-high-needs students. And here, there's a slightly interesting thing going on is, you'll notice that our high-needs students are sort of hugging the target for the first three grades, three, four, and five, but come six, seven, and eight, even our, I'm sorry, our non-high-needs students, even our non-high-needs students, the red line up here, even they are actually not meeting our desired target. So, it's, so our high-needs students, I, I mean, they are much lower. They're in, sort of in level two on average, but then they actually end up in the top of level one in mathematics. But even our non-high-needs students are actually falling, not, you know, achieving our desired level of aggregate performance. So, again, pointing to this notion of middle school mathematics instruction.
And to remind the board about the standards transition that preceded the, the assessment transition. The students who were in kindergarten, when the board adopted the new, more rigorous English Language Arts and math standards that these assessments assess, are currently in seventh grade. So, if districts made an immediate transition, at least for their kindergarteners in that year, which some districts were able to and some were not, the kids who are currently in seventh grade have had instruction aligned to these higher standards throughout their career. So, it's clear that career Caleb is not enough. And the report that you saw last year, the Commissioners Report on Mathematics, does indicate that there are more supports needed to really help, especially the kids that need us the most, make this important challenge. And those, that, those middle school math areas are the critical setup for the STEM careers that we've been talking about in terms of career pathways in high school and beyond.
Is, is this making, does this help? Give you a pic, big picture, okay?
And that, that was a good explanation, because when I read in the summary that middle school mathematics instruction is a significant challenge, that, that makes you think why that is.
Go one more, Mark. Go one more. I'm gonna, I've already made my, the points in the bullet. I'm not gonna read them to you. So, now, let's look at SAT. Now, SAT, yep.
Can we go back for a second?
Uh, sure.
Go back, you go back to the, the English Language Arts?
Uh, the split between high-needs and.
High-need and English.
Okay. So, if you could go back, yeah, that one.
Yeah. I guess I'll make an assumption that I understand, so I would just kind of clarify the, I think with this, if I understand it correctly, what this graph is, what the chart is saying is that if you look at the slope on the, the high-need students, and you look at the slope on the non-high-need students, the growth is about the same. They start at different places. It's not that, is that?
Well, we're not talking, it looks like a trend line here, but it's really not a trend line. We're trying to show you, this is one-year performance. So, we're just showing you students in grades three, four, five, and six. But you did see the, you did see the same line for three years of data in the prior slide. So, it's, it's not as if kids are growing from, the growth pattern is the same necessarily. But if this type of performance is stable, then you can make the inference that growth patterns are the same. So, for example, if you go back to the prior chart, yeah, this one, you notice that across three years, we see the trend line is kind of flattening, right? So, for the upper grades, the slope is this way, but then it kind of goes that way. And, and that trend is continuing for three cycles in a row. Could you go one forward, Mark? Yeah. So, it's continuing for three cycles in a row. So, the sixth graders in fourteen, fifteen would be the seventh graders in fifteen, sixteen. You see what I mean? So, they, they would kind of.
It's not a cohort. It's not the same kids.
Exactly. It's not the same kids. So, we're not looking at growth directly, but, but given that the slope is kind of flat in the upper grades, I think our growth is slower in the upper grades. I think that is a fair.
I think it's fair. Yeah, it's fair. I guess, I guess the point I was trying to make is, and I realize it's not cohorts. You really can't do it. But if you look at the, of the, the, the high-need students in the state, if, if they're representative of their peers, and then, you know, year after year, their, their growth rate could well be the same as the non-high-needs. They just started at a much lower point.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, it's not that those, I mean, it's, it, it debunks the thought that, well, the high-need students can't learn.
Well, but, true, but what I would posit is that that growth is not adequate. You know, I think that's really the, so, yes, they are growing. Uh, you know, students are growing, but the growth is not adequate to get, to get students up to that, up to that level. So, I do have matched cohort growth results, which is the true same kids over time, and, and I'll share that in, in just a second. Okay. So, SAT, this is not grade eleven. So, we were looking at three through eight. Now, we're looking at grade eleven. So, I'm using the same approach to illustrate the SAT results as well, which is, you've got the overall scale. Now, this is a scale that you at least have some familiarity with the numbers, right? Two hundred to eight hundred. People are sort of, people know those numbers. And so, you notice that the five-twenty score is from fifteen, sixteen, and the five-twenty-four in ELA is from sixteen, seventeen. So, slight increase in overall ELA performance, increase in math performance as well, on average. But let's look at, let's look at twenty-sixteen, seventeen data in terms of our gap. What you see is both our high-needs and our non-high-needs students are actually performing below the state target of, up here. That's our state target for the SAT.
And their scores declined.
Uh, no, this is two different groups. The scores increased. The scores increased. I don't know if this needs a new battery or what, but the scores did increase from one year to the next, but this is showing the gap in sixteen, seventeen. And the, and the fact that both groups are underachieving where our target is. Just one point, Mark, if you could go to the next. Just one point, Mark, if you could go to the next. Just one caveat here is that the, these are from the redesigned SAT, right? That was launched last year. They're reporting it on the same scale, so when it comes to ELA and math, it, the numbers look the same, but the scores don't mean the same from the old SAT to the new SAT. When you got a 500, when you get a 530 on the new test, according to the College Board, it actually concords to a 500 on the old test. So it actually is concording lower. So a higher number on the new test is not the same as a higher number on the old test. And the proof is hitting, the proof is in the pudding in terms of, they're, people, the reality is coming, is being made now because people in colleges are using this new SAT to, for college admissions decisions. And they're sort of saying, how does this new SAT score, if I select a kid with a 530, what is that kid actually able to do when they come in? So I think the reality of what a 530 means, or a 550 means, or a 600 means, I think that meaning will become clearer in the years ahead as colleges start to use this data. I'm just telling you that in the College Board study, it's actually concording lower when it comes to the old test, so.
Is there a reason they did that, or did it just happen?
Is there a reason they did?
They set up their scores to basically, you know, from the perspective of the old encrochity, which I'm getting more and more comfortable with, you look at that and you say they're lowering the standards because they're raising the numbers that go along with the lower performance.
The way they did the concordance, when two tests test different constructs, you can't really compare them. And so this is a new test that tests four different standards than the old SAT did. So when you have two tests that test different but similar things, you can't really talk about them the same way. So people that work with the statistics, like our psychometricians, can build what's called a concordance table. And so there can be alignment studies that actually study the, what the test tests, what it assesses. But another thing that can be done is to look at performance on the old test, look at performance on the new test, and sometimes, fortunately, look at kids that took both. So, you know, we could get more detailed information if you want on how they built their concordance table, because there's a number of different ways to do that. But a concordance table just helps you translate between one test and another. In this case, between two tests that are called the same thing, which makes it confusing. But if, you know, it could be between, you know, Smarter Balanced and the CMT, you could build a concordance table, you know, they test different things, but you could say that performance here concorted with performance there, especially if you had a group of kids that in a year took both.
Ajit, is that a typo in your, with regard to the ELA?
With the writing and the, um.
No, actually, no, it's not.
Because that concords with.
I was like, oh my god, not another one. So it used to be a two, remember the old, well, not the old, old SAT, but the one prior to this one was out of a scale of 2,400, and there were three parts to it. There was a reading, writing, and then a math. So they were reporting, when they did the new SAT, they only have two parts, sort of an ELA and a math part. So when they did the concordance, they concorted the new SAT to the old combined reading and writing session. So when you look at the 480, it's concorting, 480 out of 800 is concorting to 860 out of 1,600. So it's, it's, it's the two parts is why you have the 1,600. So I think, I think all we're saying here is, the reason why we even have this slide is to just, A, make sure you're aware that we have new tests, new scores. You can't just read them the same way as you did the old SATs, that's point number one. And point number two is that our accountability expectation for student, for average performance is up here. It's not down here. And there's, that's a whole discussion unto itself, but that's for good reason. I just want you to know that we have set the bar for aggregate performance higher than a minimum setting. So, given all these different factors.
Ajit, I know what you just said, maybe another discussion, but who sets the bar? I mean, what I've been looking at, the non-high-needs kids, we're not getting close to these targets. I mean, I'm all for going for the gold. But when you set an unreasonable target, it could have a negative impact on the measurements. I mean, why are we, I don't think we're doing that for show. Who's coming up with those targets, and if we're not hitting them, why are they where they are?
The targets? Well, first, let's start with the achievement levels themselves, I'll do a very brief on that. The achievement levels, I think the commissioner references before, are established through a standard-setting process, wherein a whole bunch of practitioners come together, look at the content of the assessment, and then make through a whole exercise, determine at what level on the test are students able to do the kinds of things we want them to do. So it's a subjective process.
But we set.
But it's a collab, well, actually, in the case of the SAT, we partnered with three other states. So we did a collaborative process with three other states that was facilitated by the College Board to establish these particular college boards. In the case of Smarter Balanced, it was the practitioners from all the Smarter Balanced member states got together in the fall of 2014, I think it was, after the Smarter Balanced field test was done in the spring of 2014, to actually use that information to sort of draw those lines in the sand. So, and then in terms of this average performance, we set the bar more than the minimum, because every average has people below and above the average. So we don't want the average to be just at the minimum bar. Because when the average is higher, then you're pulling more people up across these individual.
Well, what percentage are above?
In the case of the SAT, well, so this is an interesting question, because in the case of the SAT, our feeling is that this ELA cut score, where it landed, was a preliminary cut score that we went with, which, based on a College Board study, so which is, I think you see this value here, this line here, for the ELA minimum cut value, that's a score of 480 on the ELA. And we felt that was, while we went with it as a preliminary benchmark, we wanted to reevaluate it as we use the data and as colleges use the data for admissions. So we felt like that was a preliminary standard that we went with, because it was already on the College Board publications. But we sort of said, you know what, let's reevaluate it in a few years. But from an accountability standpoint, we had the bar up here. And the reason, one of the reasons for that is if you look at where the 480 is concorting to, and that's, this is why I put that in, the 480 is actually concorting to an 860. So again, this is crude math, but if you took 860 out of 1,600, that's like 430 out of 800. I mean, that's, you won't get into many of our state universities with a 430 in ELA.
Well, and that's a really important point. And Ajit and I had a lot of conversation with the College Board about this at the time, because the College Board had already done the studies and decided what the college readiness benchmark was, and published it. And that may be true in a math sense. So they're, what they're putting out there is true and real, according to math and statistics and things like that. And it's probably useful in a very big-picture way, but we live in Connecticut. And our Connecticut State Universities, most of our kids are not going to get into our state universities with that score. So we felt that this was a little problematic for Connecticut, and at the time, we did message that our own stakeholder is higher, even though technically, this is the college readiness benchmark. So we, in our accountability system, we aim higher, because we believe every student in Connecticut should have the choice to attend a Connecticut State University if that is their choice. And we don't want parents to think that aiming at, you know, 480 will get them there, because it might not, you know?
Yeah, so it's a lot of triangulation of a lot of different information. And ultimately, it's not just to have a target, just to have an unrealistic target. It is actually based on the standards that underlie, and even with Smarter Balanced, it's based on the standards that underlie the assessment. And then where on the assessment is that place where we now feel confident that students know what they need to know in order to be successful? So when these tests start out, there's no shading, there's just one 200 to 800 bar. Or in the case of Smarter Balanced, 2,100 to 2,800 bar. And then folks get together to figure out where we want to draw these cut lines.
What were the other states with which we worked?
We worked with New Hampshire, Maine, and Delaware. Because those were the three other states that did Census SAT as their high-school accountability test. So we partnered with those states. Actually, that standard-setting process happened in Connecticut. So we invited them, College Board came here, and it was over two days that this happened. We had educators, classroom teachers, educators from the four states in each subject area. We spent two days with the psychometricians going through the process of doing this standard setting. So, and as the commissioner mentioned, that 480 on ELA was a sort of an initial first-step compromise to at least move forward, given the College Board had already put it out. But from an accountability standpoint, we're aiming higher.
Given those three other states, are the needs defined the same way as they are in Connecticut?
Needs, meaning the student population?
Well, this is, to me, the deduction is about needs for me, right, not the score. And if you're talking about kids with higher needs and kids with low needs, are those needs as defined here in Connecticut, are they defined the same way in Maine and Hampshire?
All states have student group identification, so whether a student is a student with a disability, you know, has an IP, or is an English learner, or is from a low-income family, those are the same things across.
Universal needs.
Those are the same markers that we use to identify need in the data. Now, again, two students who are students with disabilities are not, I mean, they may not be, they may not have the same level of need, right?
Like to Mr. Clemons' point, our ESA plan and the accountability system that we've developed over many years at this point is actually more nuanced than in these other states. Although some of these states are now, I think Delaware is, right? Following us and using the Connecticut Accountability Plan and their ESA plan.
Yeah.
We do both the federal disaggregation that's required, and the federal word for that is the subgroups. I don't like that term, but they're educational demographic groups of our students. We disaggregate by all the required federal groups, but we also have created this supergroup for our kids that we use the term "high-needs." And that really came from Ajit and the team and all of the stakeholders studying, who are the kids that need us the most? Where do we need to put an extra magnifying glass on to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those kids? And so I don't think that any of those other SAT states have a high-need supergroup right now.
Not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure. So the ESA plans, as they come forward, we get the chance to see what the other states are doing. And another big group of states just submitted in September. This use of a supergroup is actually an area that we've had to clarify quite a bit, both to the federal government and, you know, just this week, in a national forum, I had to clarify. A lot of times, people worry that the use of a supergroup is being used to obscure accountability. But in Connecticut, it's actually the opposite. We layered this in to hold ourselves more accountable, to not only do the federally-required disaggregation, but also to look at putting kids together that could otherwise not be seen if we didn't have this supergroup.
Absolutely, I think that's an excellent point.
Thank you.
Because if you didn't, if you don't, there are many cases where an individual group may not have 20 kids. And if they have 15 kids in an English learner group, they might get excluded. But if you combine that with another 10 students with disabilities and another eight low-income families into a high-need group, now all of a sudden, those students count when they previously would not have counted in accountability. So it is a big deal.
Okay. Sure, and let me now briefly talk about growth, because I really want you to have time to hear from the districts as well, because they've done some good work to be here. And this is the slide I'll mention on growth. So when we're looking at growth, we're looking at the matched cohort, meaning that we're looking at students from 3rd to 4th, or 4th to 5th, 5th to 6th. So it's matched at a kid level. And then we're saying, on average, how much of their target are they achieving? Some students might reach 100% of their targets, some might reach 10% of their targets. We're averaging that, and we're saying on average, how much of their targets are they achieving? And what do we want this average to be? We want this average to be 100, because we want students to grow. And because if they don't grow, they're not going to get to higher levels of achievement. This doesn't mean they automatically from one year to the next have to be in Level 3. This just means, if you remember my growth presentations, they have to hit their incremental growth targets. So they might be the lowest-achieving student, that's all right. We don't magically expect them to be in Level 3, we expect them to hit their growth target. So what this is saying is that from 1415 to 1516, we achieved roughly 65%, students achieved roughly 65% of their targets. In ELA, from 1516 to 1617, that actually declined to about 56%. In the case of math, it was a little bit, little bit less, it was about 62% of the target. I think 61% of the target was achieved on average. So in ELA, the rate at which students was growing decreased from 1516 to 1617. And that is something we're paying very close attention to. But, and I'll now have the districts come up, because I think there are bright spots. We have seen districts and schools where they have far exceeded the state growth that we saw overall. Less so in ELA, but definitely in math, there are districts that have shown improvements and in-growth. And so we have two districts here, and I'm going to ask them to come up here. Joe and Alan. I want to thank Aldiff for these fabulous events. Thank you very much. So we have here two districts. So we have Joe McCary from Superintendent of Vernon, and Bob Testa, Assistant Superintendent from Vernon, our Alliance District. And here we have Alan Beitman from Region 10, and Sherry Burke, Assistant Superintendent from Region 10. Alan is the superintendent. So I think I'm going to ask Vernon to go first, and then we'll have Region 10 go next.
And I'd like to invite my colleagues, it's so good to see you. Thank you for being here to help us really work how the assessments are playing out in the districts, and what you're seeing with the kids, and also to celebrate some really great achievements in your districts. If you have any materials that you want to give out to the board, you can go ahead and do that. And thank you again for taking time out of a busy school day to be here with us.
So as that's going around, as we looked at the data, you know, we were looking at the achievement data, we were looking at the growth data, we were looking at subgroups and student groups, and parsing it nine different ways to Sunday, trying to see. But the main thing we were trying to do was, who were districts that showed growth, not just from 15 to 16, but also from 16 to 17? When the state as a whole was kind of not doing as well, were there some districts that had some promising efforts? So I reached out to the two superintendents, and they were more than willing to come and share some of their stories. So Joe, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you for having us today, I really appreciate it, for taking some of your time to talk to us. There are two handouts that are going around. The first is a PowerPoint about 24 slides. I talk quickly, so, and I don't need to read every single slide, so you'll understand that. But, you know, it's always important to start with the mission of the district and why we're here. It's important to talk about the vision, preparing students for post-secondary experiences. But I think the slide I want to focus on is our core beliefs. We believe in advocating for a whole-child approach to education, academic, social, and emotional. And I want to stop, and for those of you, and I know Ajit said we're limited to 10 minutes each, so I'm going to talk quickly. But, you know, as a parent, for those of you who have children, we started the school year, what do you want for your children? Well, what do I want? I want my child academically to grow one year, I want him to have friends, and I want him to be socially accepted. Academic, social, emotional. So our belief in Vernon is a growth model. We want 100% of the students to grow academically, socially, and emotionally. We want to set high expectations for student achievement, and then we want to integrate the family and community into the schools. Without them, we cannot do the work that we're doing. So before I hand it over to our Assistant Superintendent, you have a handout in front of you. And just a quick little timeline. October, two years ago, 2015, Vernon had a new superintendent, new Assistant Superintendent, new director of teaching and learning, new director of personal development. Fortunately, we attended a seminar with the Fulham Conference that was sponsored by Lead Connecticut, funding that came from here. We went, the whole team, we took that information, we went back to our district, we really dissected it. And we came back to the workshops on a continual basis. A lot of conversations with the turnaround office, a lot of positive ones, formally and informally. Desi says that I was the easiest superintendent, and I said the New Britain one is. That's okay.
The easiest male superintendent.
Thank you, thank you. Good bail out, good save for that. So we took a lot of the work from Lead Connecticut, from Fulham's workshop, brought it to the district. We said to the administrators, what are the right drivers, what are the wrong drivers? Let's get rid of the wrong, and let's improve on the right. Similarly, that year, we did a coherence and capacity audit through the Center for School Change. Five days, very similar to a NEAS visit. We had five or six former superintendents there that really dissected the district and figured out what's going on. So with efforts that was led by our Assistant Superintendent, we created a blueprint for success. And it wasn't something new. The superintendent before me created a model called Strategies for Improvement, all based on the instructional core, the relationship between student, teacher, and parent, and student, teacher, and content. And we built on that. And we said, okay, now what are administrators, what's the district going to do to do that? So I just wanted to give you that quick timeline. And then our Assistant Superintendent is going to talk a little bit more about the Blueprint for Success.
If you direct your attention to Slide 6. Our Blueprint for Success includes five drivers that support our work around the instructional core. You can see the five drivers there. Rigorous curriculum, talent management, family engagement, professional learning, and student interventions. The next slide is just a visual representation of our core beliefs. And you notice that at the center of our instructional core are the learning tasks that our teachers put in front of our students. And right underneath there are they cognitively engaging our students. The next slide, our blueprint provides really the coherence and a clear focus for our work. So everything we do is connected to the Blueprint for Success. So whether it's our school improvement plans, our goals, our SIPs, everything's connected now to our Blueprint for Success. And that was a change, that was a significant change from three years ago in the workshop that we went to back in October a few years ago. The first driver I'd like to talk to you about is rigorous curriculum. And I'm not going to read every bullet point, but I do want to highlight, last year, we had over 60 teachers involved in the process. We focused on ELA and math, K through 8 teachers. So we had to make a commitment to pull our teachers out of the classroom. And we know that that's not always an easy decision to make. However, we thought that the process of revising our curriculum was so important, we needed to dedicate time to do that. So our teachers unpacked the standards, they created assessments, and they also created instructional units. This truly was job embedded professional learning for our teachers. There's no better way to learn the standards than to roll up your sleeves and grapple about the standards on a day-to-day basis. We did partner with RES, ACES, and our teachers got feedback throughout the process. So it really truly was a process. It wasn't, we're going to create a curriculum, and then we're done with it. Because we all know a curriculum is really never done, so it's a living doctrine. So that was one of the highlights around rigorous curriculum, and we're continuing to do that. And I'll talk to you a little bit about that in a future slide. The next thing that we focused on was talent management. And as a district, evaluating our staff with high expectation, that was a clear message. When Dr. McCary came on board, was how are we evaluating? Are we calibrated? Our administrators went through a rigorous process today. I just left a meeting with our administrators, and we're still working on calibration. So we actually focused on that throughout this school year as well. We've seen much more improvement with our administrators and how we're evaluating our staff. And we know that how we're evaluating and what feedback we're giving staff is so important to improving classroom instruction. Our next slide, Slide 11, focuses on one of our other drivers, family engagement. We received a grant through the Hartford Foundation of Public Giving that allowed us to open up a single-point entry for registration. Our theory was, if we can connect with families when they first come to Vernon, we can have a better shot of staying connected with families throughout the district. So this summer, July 1, we opened up our Office of Family Engagement. We registered over 275 families and students. And we're already starting to see the fruits of our labor in that process. So families now have reached back to our office and asked us how to connect them with services in the town. So we're seeing positives of what we've made that commitment to over the summer. And the next slide, Slide 12, is around professional learning. We were fortunate, we partnered with the Center for School Change, ACES, as I mentioned, and Revision Learning. With the development of our new curriculum, that was the first step. Our next step was really to look at, what does a curriculum look like in the classroom? So we've done some lesson studies over the last few weeks, where teachers get together, 5th grade teachers get together, they plan a lesson together, then they split up, and they go in and kind of observe their colleagues in what they're teaching. How is that curriculum rolled out in a classroom, and then they come back and debrief? So you can see a lot of our drivers are similar to what New Britain mentioned about building the skills of our teachers. We really heavily invested in building the skills of our teachers. And the last driver that we're working on is around student interventions. We do now have a Common Assessment Calendar, Common Assessments and Screens that we use, and using that data to drive instruction. We do have a, we introduced a data warehouse that we built for teachers as well, so they have access to data, and they can access and see how their students are doing. I'll turn the microphone back over to Dr. McCary.
Thank you. So I always like to put this wooden quote, it's about reflection, to those of us who are basketball fans, because there is no silver bullet. And if we're all looking for it, it's not there. But we are betting on these five drivers in our Blueprint for Success. So I've told administrators that if you want something, if it's not in the five drivers, you're not getting it. So they're not getting any resources, not getting anything. This is where we're going. So what we're trying to do is build a coherent district with everybody rowing in the same direction. And hopefully northeast, you know, as scale over time, that's where we want to go. So that conversation was given directly to faculty members from myself, high expectations for learning, follow the Blueprint for Success, and data-driven decision-making. And what we want from every single student, and this is something that the board has adopted, is 100% growth for every single student. Now, a student may be at a lower level or a different ability level, we still want 100% growth. So every single student needs to show that growth. And we have a plus-two model. The plus-two model is, let's say, Mr. Bravely has a 4th grade classroom, and he has 20 students in the class. 10 of those students are a benchmark for master in mathematics. We're saying to him, our expectation is that we want two more students to be at grade level at the end of the year, a plus-two model, so that we can show that positive growth. That was a message sent to faculty. If they still only got 10 at the end of the year, they still showed growth, as Ajit showed you with these scale scores, that's great. If it goes below 10, we're going to have a conversation, because that's unacceptable. So that was our philosophy that pushed everything. And I have to say that the Alliance funding and the resources and the supports were huge to make this happen. You know, the money we used in different areas was helpful. So if you look at our student achievement real quick, and we had it in a PowerPoint, but we're going to show it to you on the slides. You know, the first increase was the improvement in proficiency rates in math and English Language Arts. And we want to use the state as a benchmark. The state increase this year was negative 1.4 in English Language Arts, positive 1.6 in math. Vernon's increases this year were positive 5.1 in English Language Arts and a positive 8.7 in mathematics. And this was a positive indicator for us. Thank you. This was a positive indicator for us. We used the SBAQ scores as a measure, and it was a great job by the students and the teachers. If you look at the two-year cohort rate, no, no, we've got to remember it's all about growth. The state increased 1.8% in English Language Arts over two years and in proficiency, and 4.5% in math. Using that same cohort rate, Vernon increased 10.1 in English Language Arts and 13.9 in mathematics. This is all attributed to the student achievement model, that plus-two model, and you can see the graphs in there. You know, moving forward, we were proud to say that, you know, out of growth in all the districts, 185 districts, Vernon was 11th in growth in ELA from all districts, and we were 8th in mathematics. If you start to look at the rough cohort, and this was some of the conversation you were having earlier, the students in Grade 3, how they did in Grade 4, and how they did in Grade 5. In Vernon, because that's really how you want to measure, against yourself, not against anybody else, how did we do better? So in math, students in Grade 3 were 31%, Grade 4, 38%, Grade 5, 45%. Positive growth heading northeast. ELA was 39, 46, and 49. 6th, 7th, and 8th grade is another good three-year age, 30, 34, and 31. And then ELA was 41, 45, and 50. I do want to make one point from a conversation earlier, and I think the Commissioner pointed it out well. You know, I'm a parent of a 7th and 8th grader, so in 3rd and 4th grade, and I was a superintendent, they were not learning the Common Core standards. They were not in the Connecticut framework. They were still using the CMT ones. Now, when they got to 4th and 5th grade, we changed the rules for them, and now they're being assessed somewhere else. Because I hear it at night. They're like, why are we doing this? You know, what's going on? Calm down. But I think that's when you overlay it, you're going to have some bumps in the road. But the numbers in 3, 4, and 5 are very, very encouraging. So we're headed in that right direction. And then the last one is the student matched cohort rate. You know, I'm proud to say that Vernon was number one among Alliance Districts at 60.6% for ELA and 66.4% in math. If you can notice that little dip in ELA, I think we all felt it this year. It wasn't just Connecticut, we all felt it. So those were three indicators of student success, and I'm up on my 10 minutes.
Do you want to do questions after, or do you want to do questions for them?
Will people have questions for Vernon?
I just want to congratulate you, and also, Ajit, thank you for bringing examples that this is doable. And I think we need to, you know, sort of draw what works and share that you can have many challenges, but you're working coherently and intentionally. And with, again, the way you're approaching it, you can get these results. So, Brown, very, very pleased to be here. Congratulate you, and please express our congratulations to your school districts.
I will, thank you.
I think when I talked with Joe and Bob, I think what stood out for me was, and you heard it today, the stories of the work that the SDE is doing in all its areas are touching this district. And I think that was kind of nice for me to hear, that, and I sit in the data world and measurement and performance, but it's nice to see that it truly is a team effort from here. And then at the district level, it's really nice to see the attention being paid to our teachers, because they are the ones who can truly make this happen for our kids. Not us, not me with the charts, but it's got to be on ground.
I think it would be fun if Harlington presented, and then we can kind of have the two districts feed off each other.
I just have an overall question, and I greatly appreciate having the districts come and share with us. It's just sort of reflecting back on some of the state-level data that Ajit showed around the sort of stark difference between high-needs and non-high-needs students. And so as you talk, and now that you've spoken, could you just provide a little bit of a context around the percentage of your population that is high-needs versus non-high-needs?
So Vernon is a very diverse district. And we, you know, when I first got there, we made the effort or the philosophy that we want equity for all. Because if you know Vernon, it's Rockville, which is an urban setting, Vernon Center, which is suburban, and then you go by Lake Street, it's rural. So it's almost like, if you took the state of Connecticut and shrunk it, it would be Vernon. We have 46% free and reduced lunch. We have similar proportions of demographics, male, female, ethnicity, race, et cetera. So think of it like the state and shrink it, and that's Vernon. But 46% free and reduced lunch is pretty high. It's higher than the state average. I hope I answered your question.
My name is Alan Beidman, Superintendent of Schools of Region 10, and with me is Sherry Burke, our Director of Student Learning. Thank you for inviting us this afternoon. Just to help you in perspective, Region 10 is composed of the towns of Burlington and Harlington. And the reason I always want to say that is, we are in partnership with our towns. We do not function in isolation. We have very supportive selectmen and very supportive boards of finance. And while taxes in these small towns are based upon property taxes, the residents of those towns support us each and every day. And that's significant to why we believe you will see some of the results we're seeing. Also want to echo Joe and Bob's comments. There's an old saying, you never give a superintendent an open mic. And there's a reason, but Joe's comments and Bob's comments, and Joe's been a dear friend for far too many years. But they have echoed exactly what is happening. Not only, we're much more of a suburban rural school district, we're not a very diverse school district. We have a very small free and reduced lunch. And it goes through some of the comments I heard earlier. Poverty is not limited to minority students, black, Hispanic, Asian students. Poverty cuts across all levels. And even though Burlington and Harlington do have pockets of wealthy families, they have equal pockets of poverty or students in need. And they come to us with some of the same issues that you will see in the urban setting. Family violence, domestic violence, poverty, lack of food, unemployment, foreclosures, all of the things we see in this state and throughout this country. I've asked Sherry to share with you, and the reason I did this, Sherry came to us three years ago when we made a major transition. And her leadership in the school district is truly what has changed and given Region 10 a boost and the reason we're here today. So we're extremely proud of the work she's done, very proud of the fact that she has a free hand. I stay out of her way, and I'm going to stay out of her way right now.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here, so thank you for giving up your time. As Alan said, I want to share with you the story of Region 10. I'm going to go about this a little bit different than our colleagues in Vernon. And really just imagine that you're standing, you know, for the balcony view of Region 10. And really, some of the primary shifts that have occurred that I believe have had a direct emphasis on our ability to be successful as measured by these standardized assessments. I did start in Region 10 almost three years ago. And I started mid-year, right after the holidays. And I thought that Mr. Beidman was a little crazy to have someone come into such a big job after the year seemed to have been already sort of etched. However, looking back on it, that provided us a tremendous opportunity to be reflective and really get to know what was happening inside our classrooms. I took that gift of time and spent countless hours in classrooms, sitting on the floor with children, learning what they knew, talking with my teachers, and assessing what was happening at the classroom level. As others have already said this morning, what happens in the classroom is where we will move the needle and continue to reach our target levels for success. And so what I saw was a tremendous group of educators, many of whom had taught in Regional School District 10 for a number of years, who had tremendous intentions and drive and stamina to do what was best for our children. But unfortunately, what I also saw was that there was a lack of coherence, both vertically and just across the same grade level. I also recognized that the I also recognized that the teacher's voice was a bit absent in some of the decision-making. And to say that in a public venue, certainly here I am saying it, and there's no more public opportunity than this, takes a tremendous amount of courage. And we started the dialogue in the classroom with our teachers to say, you know, what could we do differently? And so the, the primary shift that we've made in Region Ten is that we have given some voice and decision-making for collaborative decision-making back to our teachers. We have embraced the model of teacher leadership wholeheartedly. We have formed a teacher leadership council, which has vertical representation from all of our schools. We've even had the opportunity to work with Sarah Barzy and some members of her team to really create a council that I'm quite proud of. And so I think that it's important to share that with you because it's allowed us to create over the last few years, a culture of professional learning that has made it okay to ask questions and to lean on colleagues. And I think that we really need to support our teachers, particularly at our youngest grades. They are practitioners that have to have immense content knowledge across all subject matters, as well as deal with the social and emotional needs of our youngest and most fragile learners. So the teachers have been empowered to have a, a platform to share strategies that have been proven successful. If something is working in your classroom, we want to know about it. We don't want you to close your door and keep doing that. We want you to open your door and share it with your colleagues. So on the, on the second slide, you see teacher leadership right at the top. We also have created a forum for professional learning that is highly personalized. We have a professional learning day this Friday, where I will have twenty to twenty-five different types of learning happening within a very small district. We are learning from each other. Funds are tight at the moment. And so more so than ever, we are capitalizing on the expertise within our district. Teacher-led PD has been powerful. We have had opportunities for teachers to teach our administrators and lead professional development for them. And as was being discussed earlier in New Britain, I think it is, it is not unique to any one school district, the, the need for a mind shift. And so using this culture of professional learning, we've been able to do that. You also see on that slide that teachers have begun to visit each other's classrooms, not for evaluative purposes, but to offer camaraderie and collaboration on a much deeper level. The next slide speaks to the data and how we're using data. You know, I believe wholeheartedly, a rising tide lifts all ships. So we want to use that data to identify and very specifically what's working. And so at, to that vein, we have a monthly district-level data team that has representation from all of our schools in the district, both administrators, practitioners, teacher, you know, classroom teachers, as well as our special education and psychologists, guidance counselor, whoever we can get in the room, so that we have a coherent vision for what are we looking for. I think that teachers for a number of years believed that collecting the data was what their job was. And we have significantly shifted the idea that data for data's sake really does nothing for us. We really need to look at data that informs instruction. And, and you, so you see here on this slide that I'm talking about, you know, using our data from the classroom, individual data. Who is that child? What does he or she look like? What, what class are they in at eight AM? And what can we do to make a difference in that child's learning? So we have implemented a couple of very specific things that I think are worth noting. We took on a very comprehensive analysis of our curriculum. And just as our colleagues in Vernon mentioned, we hoped and wanted to be in alignment with the Connecticut Core Standards. That's a big job. And it really required that we let go of some things that weren't working. And particularly in districts that tend to achieve well, which Region Ten has historically, it's harder to let go. If it's not broke, why are we fixing it? What is it that really needs to happen? And so Alan has been highly supportive to myself and our administrative team in pushing us out of our comfort zone just a little bit and saying to the teachers, you know, where is the most value? What, what are, what are we getting, where are we getting the most bang for our buck, so to speak, in the time that we have with our children? And so once we did that, we realized that there was some evidence around the idea that not all of those activities, curriculum, lesson planning, was achieving the goal that we had set forth and being carefully aligned to the Connecticut Core Standards for ELA and math. Literacy is my background, my passion. And so it was one of the first things that I tackled upon coming to the region. We had, we had, and we continue to have tremendous teachers of reading, all going about it in a slightly different way. And so that coherence was critical to make sure that I could compare apples to apples and to make sure that we had all of our, all of our time being spent in, in the critical components of early literacy. So we tip on a very balanced approach to literacy instruction. In our K three, we use the DIBELS assessment to ensure that we are screening for those early literacy skills that we know are so important. And then we balanced the classroom to look at what are the needs of our students. Many of them come to us with strong literacy skills. However, we also have children who are just very much emerging in their readiness for school. And so we use both Readers and Writers Workshop from Columbia University at Teachers College, together with Foundations, which is a research-based, highly-successful program for those foundational skills around phonemic awareness. And we get children engaged, lots of real reading early on. And we found that to be quite successful. Math is an area that we've had a lot of success in, in a short amount of time. And we attribute that to two primary reasons. We've aligned our curriculum completely, K eight. We have two programs that work in concert together, Bridges and Glenn Co. Math, which directly connect to the Connecticut Core Standards for mathematical standards as well as mathematical practices. And we've given ample time to math instruction. I think we, we have high expectations for young learners in math, and we need to give time to build those foundational mathematical concepts, just as we do with literacy. On the next slide, I've already spoken to many of, of these pieces, so I'll just reiterate a couple that I think are important. As I spoke to already, we did look at a careful alignment of our curriculum. I cannot emphasize enough how important that is. We also made it very public. We gave teachers a tool called Atlas Rubicon, which allows us to have an electronic warehouse for all of our curriculum documents. And it's super easy to use. It's, it's friendly, it's intuitive. We can put it up on our website for the public to view. And teachers can better understand that curriculum documentation is the roadmap, both for them and for their learners, and that can be fluid. Curriculum can't be something that goes in a three-ring binder and sits on a shelf and is never touched. Curriculum must be a very viable and, and fluid document so that as our learners change, our instruction changes. And so our instruction has to matter for all kids. I've already spoken to engagement for learning, but I cannot say how important that is. Regardless of your environment, kids need to want to be there. They have to want to learn. And we need educators that are just as excited about learning so that that is just palpable in a classroom. Lastly, we have a new focus on enrichment as well as intervention. You know, when Ajit was sharing his growth model, that means that every learner, regardless of where they're starting, must make growth. In a district like Region Ten, it could become easy to say, they're out of three, we're good. I'm going to focus my efforts on these three or four or five children in my class. And I recognize how fortunate we are to be able to say that. But at the same time, it can create complacency. And you can have many, many children who don't reach their full potential. So we have made a dramatic shift in Region Ten to say that all children must continue to grow. The last slide, I just recapped, you know, I'm sorry, the next slide is some quotes, which I'll let you take a look at. I, I had a lot of fun asking, asking people, you know, what do you think makes us successful? Why do you like being in Region Ten? What do you think we've done differently over the last couple of years that has attributed to our success? And those were wonderful conversations over the last few days, amidst some challenging times, you know, in public education. So we really enjoyed that. And what came through very clearly to me is that our teachers are happy to come to work, and they love what they do. And our families and our Board of Education and our community partnerships believe in us and want us to continue to grow. The last slide is a recap of many of the things that I just spoke to because you can't answer this question in, in one little, you know, soundbite. It's, it's a very complex system. We work with little human beings who come to us with different needs and, and different wants and desires and different dreams. And so I've seen my job to give the adults in our system the tools that they need, the mindset to believe that all of our children can learn. And so through that leadership, I believe that we've really shifted a culture. And I, and I know that we will continue to be successful. The data is wonderful to look and see that, that we are realizing some of those goals. But the real proof is in our classrooms, where I see children hands raised, eager to learn, really grappling with concepts that seem to be well beyond what we would expect from a little eight or nine-year-old. But they are doing it and they can do it. And I think as long as we believe that, we'll continue to see success. So thank you for your time.
Could you share the data, the growth?
So, so I didn't bring our growth data because Ajit's the numbers person.
We have it, and we'd be happy to send it as a follow-up to the board.
Yeah, I mean, similarly to Vernon.
We can send it as a follow-up. You know, I think that when Ajit talked about, he and I talked about bringing some districts so that the board could see how the strategies are playing out. Now that we're several years into some of the improvements that you put in place, we wanted to be able to do that. I asked him to select some of our fastest-growing districts. So these are a couple of our high-growth districts, and we'll get you the more grand.
The percentages of students meeting their growth target in Region Ten is about seventy-four percent. So it's, it's high. We've, similarly to Vernon, grown by upwards of ten percent in our math performance. Language Arts this past year was about six percent. I, I'm sorry that I did not bring that as a handout. I, I get scared of those numbers, so he assured me that he would handle that. Thanks a lot. You know, I always say, I'm the ideas girl. But we, but we presented just Monday evening to our Board of Ed, and it's safe to say that their eyes were wide and their mouths were dropped. They said, wow, keep doing what you're doing. I mean, so the results do support the things that I'm sharing with you.
Absolutely, and thank you so much again. I, I want to applaud you.
Thank you.
And really, what I'm the happiest about is demonstration that it's doable, that you can do it in a rural, more rural, more, I mean, more diverse, where you have complexities that are maybe similar to other places with intentionality and focus and, again, involving everyone. So thank you so much.
And I, I'd like to really appreciate both districts that took time to be here today. It's very difficult to be out of your district this long, and we appreciate it. And I want to underscore some of what came out in the presentations. The board also works very hard, and you don't always get to hear how your efforts are playing out. And we got to hear a lot about some efforts that the board's put a lot behind. And, you know, Dr. Mark Carrion mentioned the Lead Connecticut efforts, which you know, our talent office of Dr. Barzy have worked very hard on that, as well as the calibration efforts, the early literacy efforts that Mr. Beitman and Ms. Burke talked about. That's something you really put in place. This board approved those measures, such as DIBELS, that are being used to measure those early literacy skills and intervene so kids get off to the right start. So I think there's a lot of evidence of the board's work in these districts and the work of the department. And we're all hopeful that there will be resources to continue that. When I think about what you did with Lead Connecticut, and we know that that program right now is not resourced. And I think, what about a superintendent coming into a district now? You know, they would have to find other resources to support them.
If I could just echo what you said, Commissioner. This is my twentieth year as a superintendent. I will say to Joe, I have a thirty-seven-year-old and an eleven-year-old. So that's why my hand shakes as much as it does. But having lived with many commissioners and many state boards of education, this is the most responsive state department of Ed we've ever had. And I compliment you and your staff and your mission statement. When we call you, we get an answer. If we don't get an answer, we get someone to call us back. That has not always been the case in this state. And it's been frustrating for superintendents and assistant superintendents and people in central office who are seeking guidance. So the mind shift that's occurred at the State Department of Ed is significant in the reason we're having successes in our school. And I can tell you, from twenty years' experience and forty-seven in the state of Connecticut, I've never seen it this good.
Thank you. Terry.
Mark Twain said a good compliment.
Terry, the mic.
As Mark Twain said, a good compliment will keep this department going for a couple months.
But no. And appropriation would help.
Yes. That's the follow, the check's in the mail.
My question is to, to both districts. The, and let me back up. I've always felt that anyplace, anywhere, there's always pockets of excellence. And, and sometimes the, the, the solution to what we grapple with is hiding in plain sight. And I really praise Ajit for getting these two pockets of excellence here. And I wondered if you could just share what reaction the CEA and AFT has had in your districts.
Certainly, we are a CEA district, and we've worked very closely with CEA. Initially, I think when Sheri approached me and, and the board about teacher leadership, there were some concerns by our board. And we continually said to them, this is where the learning takes place. This is where the discussions have to start. I can only compliment the CEA and the CEA representatives who work with us. They have continued to support us. They've come in to help us when we've needed help with teacher evaluation plans and revisions. So that it has been a partnership, not just with the two towns, with the Board of Education, but with the unions, who, whose members are the ones who work for us in the school district.
Vernon is also a CEA district, and we work closely with the teachers. I think the philosophy that the state board has adopted of student growth, the Vernon board has adopted student growth. And when we have those conversations, the teachers are in the same, we want growth too. We want every single student to grow in our classroom, whether it's math, ELA, PE, science, social studies, the arts, whatever it is, we just want to see that growth. So when you have everybody believing in the same thing, it becomes much easier. And there's no changes in philosophy. You know, they know, the thing I've said to them from day one is the same thing today. We're looking for that growth model a hundred percent of the students. And they want to see that as well. So that it's been very cooperative with the unions.
You know, there's this whole concept that union folks follow the contract, and then they do the work. And I would tell you, that's not the case in Connecticut. It's certainly not the case, I would guess, in Vernon and Region Ten. I have not had, in, in certainly the twelve years I've been in Region Ten, agreements by the teachers regarding the expectations, the work, the meetings that we've asked them to attend. They don't come to me and say, but my contract says. They come to us and say, how can we help you? How can we help the students? So I think it's very important to understand this whole view of the union kind of guiding the, the employees, work a little slower. Would that way we get some more employees or do this or do that? It's not the mindset of certainly the CEA, of our administrators, of our parent educators, of our nurses. They are there for the children, and for the children's sake, and for their parents and for the district's benefit. And they don't measure their work by what their contract says. They measure it by what their heart and their mind tell them to do.
Okay, that's, thank you for sharing that. That's important.
Can I just, for Ajit, before you step back, step back? I remember a lot of conversations early on before we went to the smarter ballot. I remember a lot of conversations early on before we went to smarter balanced testing that the first year was going to be difficult because it was all new and that there may be some concerns about the scores. And yet the second year results have dropped. So my, my question is, is, is the drop more significant than we really realized because we were anticipating the first year to be low to begin with? I mean, I, I see what we're doing to correct it, but.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I know you want to get.
You go ahead.
So I think this is actually the third year of smarter balanced results. So when we said the first year, the results are going to be different, what we mean is, what we meant then is what we were used to seeing with the CMT in terms of how many kids are meeting benchmark or standard or percent goal or whatever the metric was, that these numbers are, may not look the same. And so every state tried to alert its constituents and say, hey, this is a, a different yardstick, a different scale, a different test. We're measuring, we're measuring slightly different things. Similar reading and math idea, but it's a very different standard. So we alerted them to that. In the second year, you know, we were pleased to see improvement. And in the third year, it's, the results are a little mixed, right? In ELA, it's a little bit down and math's a little bit up. I mean, you saw where the lines are, right? So I mean, you're talking changes in really in a very narrow band of the overall scale. So I'm not one to panic or, or, or get super excited about small increases, decreases either way. So to me, as far as I'm concerned, we're still figuring out how to implement these standards. And I'll tell you, I mean, I was in a district, one of our alliance districts yesterday, talking to their teachers who are using the smarter balanced interim assessments. So the interim assessments are, this is, I'm going to get to your answer. It's a little long-winded way, but I, I will answer your question. So the, the interim assessments are topical assessments. So they're not like designed to measure and track progress and all that. They're really designed to help the teacher, meaning that what does a kid know, what does a kid not know about a particular topic? So whether it be ratios and proportions or whether it be finding evidence in the text in grade five. Or, you know, there are small blocks of 10, 15 questions that help the teacher. So what I heard yesterday in an alliance district is, we had our teachers actually use that last year for the first time. And oh my goodness, we finally understood what this test is expecting of our kids. Because they don't get to see the test other than when, you know, sort of walking around the classroom or whatever. But, but they didn't really understand how the standards were actually playing out in terms of the test. And what, and what a test does, what a question does, a test question does is it, it makes clear what the standard is expecting. And so when, and I think teachers are still really understanding what the standards are expecting and how the test questions are placing cognitive demands on the children in terms of problem solving, in terms of reading, in terms of doing the mathematics. So I think, I think we're still in the early years of this. I mean, would I have liked to see the bar go up? Sure. But we didn't see it. But I'm, but it's not like, I'm not concerned that we're all of a sudden all the way down and oh my goodness. It was not good to see the growth results, frankly, I'll be honest. I mean, I would have liked to see better growth results, but this is what we saw. But I still feel like we're in the early, early phases of this. And these two districts actually, to me, are showing something different. So part of my question was, what is it that they're doing that's different?
I think, don't you have also higher participation in these 30 years?
Yes.
Yeah, in the grade three through eight, I would say we're getting better. But I, I wouldn't attribute any changes to participation necessarily.
Higher participation.
Not necessarily. That's not what my, I, I think it's, I think we're still figuring out that these standards are complex.
Well, I think one of the things that Dr. Markary, Markary talked about is also the grade by grade difference. And I think we are still dealing with a group of kids who transitioned during their educational experience. And I don't know if at the local level, you're seeing that.
We're definitely seeing that. And just like you said about pockets, you know, we're at 60, we're at 50% for grade three or we're at 30% for grade eight. As that cohort moves along, I can guarantee you, we're going to have increase in scores because those students were taught that way from the beginning. I mean, the best way to have rolled out any type of initiative like this was to start in kindergarten, grades one and two. Instead, we overlaid it. So those kids who are Alan's and my kids' ages in sixth, seventh and eighth, you know, their heads are spinning because they were told to go one way and now they're told to go another way. And I just want to go back to your point from a district perspective. Moving to the Connecticut Core Standards wasn't just a curriculum shift. I could write curriculum, we could all write curriculum. It was an instructional shift and it was a whole mindset. So I'm going to give you a quick example. Write your name down on a piece of paper with your dominant hand. Then take your other hand and write it again. That's the shift in instruction of how we do things in the Connecticut Core Standards. Now try to make all those teachers do that along with new curriculum, along with the students that have had it. I think you're going to, it's getting there, but it's a bumpy rope. And I think the scores will continue to increase.
It is, yeah, it's good to understand it because unfortunately, whether we like it or not, we all have measurements.
Of course.
And those measurements are when those bar graphs go up on the screen. And, and like Commissioner talked about the new standards, I think it's important to know that process because it's, it's easy to get caught up into, you know, looking at just the data and saying.
So if I can just say, because I know Mr. very well, it's just like the stock market. It's not all going to go up in one day. It goes up and down, up and down, and it's a jagged edge, but you want to look at the improvements over time. So you're going to have a down year. Your portfolio didn't do too well in 2008 as you opened up a new business, but you did well in nine, 10, 11 and 12.
How do you know? Did you see my portfolio?
I researched the State Board, but not to that level. I just wanted to add, you know, our conversation is very focused on the Connecticut Core Standards for math and ELA as it should be and the newness of the assessment. We also have to remember that we start testing students in third grade. They're eight years old. They have little hands and, and little bodies and we're testing them on computers. And so as I know you're well aware, but the technology is a skill that must be taught. And we've found some value in the interim assessment, really just for the purpose of helping, helping our youngest learners assimilate to this testing method. It's very different. And I completely agree with what Ajit was just sharing around what does this standard really mean? Reading the standards and understanding the standards and I think so much of the efforts across the state and across the nation when the Common Core first came to be was around just what are the standards? We didn't get to that deeper level of understanding around how do I teach to this standard? How do I measure? If I had a nickel for every time I've said to my teachers, we must align, you know, our intended instruction, our taught instruction, our assessed instruction, and then know what to do with that. So I think that it's a very complex assessment that looks at many, many things. I am extremely excited that we now have this added data point around growth because frankly, that's really where it's at for our individual learners. But I appreciate your question because we're always looking at these little fluctuations, but it could have just been the day or their ability to, to take an online assessment. It's a lot of different pieces.
Erin.
Ajit, I want to thank you for bringing up that point because someone who was in the classroom in the 80s when CMTs came out, it, it took a long time for us to get that right. And to, and we saw the ups and downs. And, you know, we're in a society now that everything wants to, we want right, right away. So I was still in the classroom when S-SPAC came and the, the shift for instruction was just enormous. And I, I think you have to look at that. I always laughed at, in my last couple of years, I would go to my newest teachers because they knew it better than our season because of that standard and the change. And I think we have to, we have to think that way. It is a big shift that took place, an instructional shift. And it's not, it's not going to be something we're going to see in two, three years. It's, we're going to see those ups and downs and, and, you know, we know where it is. But, you know, I think back at CMTs, you know, they would say, Erin, like, you don't seem upset. I said, it took, it took years. It took years before we figured out CMTs. We're not going to do it in two. So thank you for bringing that up because I think it's important that we remember that. But it's not something that just moves overnight and we're perfect and we're, we got it right. So thank you.
I want to ask a question about the shift. When we adopted the, basically the Common Core and the Connecticut Core, less so than our colleagues in other places around the country, but there was a fair amount of concern expressed that we were narrowing the curriculum or that we're doing, you know, weaving out important things. And then when the curriculum is reinforced by a coordinated testing system that, some parts of the country, it's, it's virulent. It's not so here. But do you have any concerns now that you've been working with that Common Core curriculum with regard to the quality, not of the teaching, but the quality of the curriculum?
Not at all. And just to give you a little background, I began my first superintendentcy in Manchester, Connecticut. And we had tremendous in and out of students. And the first thing I learned, I'd been a principal there about 15 years before I became superintendent, was that a child who came to us from another school system was either ahead or behind by months, years. And the disadvantage to that child was that when he or she came to us, we had to find some resources either to take that child out of the classroom or to find some additional time, which is very difficult to find in a child's schedule. What we have now is a common blueprint across the state. A child that moves from Vernon to Region 10, from Region 10 to Vernon, from Region 10 to another community. Their parents can expect and anticipate that their child is not going to be behind, is not going to have to receive remedial services, not because they don't need remedial services, but because their school system, and Sherry addressed this and I'm sure Joe is seeing this, their school system focused on what I like to do, what I like to teach, not what a common theme should be. And as I said, the key issue for us is, I'm very comfortable when students come into our school district. We, we've seen a reversal even in a small rural school district I announced to the board on Monday. We're up the number of students. We're not seeing the trend down. And this is a fairly rural and affluent community, so parents are moving into our district. I'm not as worried about those students as I would have been five or 10 years ago, coming in and having to be remediated, not because they were not capable students, but because the sending school district simply did not focus on the same things we did for a variety of reasons.
I just want to echo Alan's points and he's 100% correct. We needed this. And I tell our teachers, you know, there's BG and AG, before Google and after Google. Well, before, we used to teach content and it was whatever the teacher wanted to teach. Now we're teaching skills and competencies. So we need to do those and go deeper as opposed to going wider. Because students, once they have those skills and abilities, can easily get the content on the web. They need to know how to process it. They need to know how to analyze, synthesize, evaluate, that higher order thinking. And that's what those Connecticut Core Standards bring.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Mr. Chair, can I ask in respect that we go to the five days because the participant person is in the.
Oh, I guess red all days. I have a motion for five days.
So move.
Oh, there she is. Andrea, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay.
I can hear, I am thrilled that it is great to meet the board for the technical system. She brings experience not only here from this board, but also her role with CDIA and working on, on workforce development across the state. So we're really thrilled and hope you will prove that.
Anybody have anything?
I would just like to add that I serve with Andrea and you won't find a better person that's committed to our youth technical education, state of Connecticut. And I think one of the things with her background is as we're moving the technical education system into more partnerships in the private workforce, I think her experience and the ability to draw private participation into a public environment would be phenomenal. So I support it and we look forward to having her on board.
Would you want to say something too?
No.
I, I feel as if I've known you for much longer than you are old, so I can't have known you that long. Very enthusiastic and glad that you've agreed to undertake this position. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry you had to wait around. I'm told we have not very much left to do, so rather than breaking for lunch now, why don't we just finish?
Kathy, would you mind going to your financial matters? And Alan and I have asked Kathy to put together some information for the board that you'll find in your supplemental folder because I think it's important that you may be asked a lot of questions right now about how exactly is school funding working in the absence of a budget? And I felt a little better this last week to learn that we're not the only state. I thought we were the only state who didn't have a budget yet. I guess Pennsylvania, yeah, Pennsylvania doesn't either. They, their legislature was able to agree on a continuing resolution. So that's a little bit of a different situation than we're in. So we need Kathy to kind of walk us through the handouts that she's prepared for you so that you can understand how our districts will receive funding through the department in the absence of an appropriation.
Good afternoon, board members. Nice to see everyone. So there.
Is that mic on?
Yeah.
Yes. I believe it. Is that better?
That is better.
Okay. I always have trouble with the mic. So there were two items that were included in your supplemental package. The first one was just a summary of the distribution of the education cost sharing grant under the governor's executive order. As you're all aware, until such time as a budget is passed and the governor signs it, the state is operating under executive order. And that executive order pretty much dictates what spending is available and how we will distribute it. So one of the things that OPM requested of us was to send the ECS payments out at the start of October this year in light of the fact that many communities are struggling with the fact that the state, you know, budget is not in place yet and other municipality that they may have received, they haven't received yet. So today, actually, all of the districts that will receive funding through the executive order ECS formula will be receiving their payment today, which I think was one of the reasons why the commissioner was thinking that, Mr. Taylor were thinking that you might be going to get questions. So I'll go through it briefly and then I'm happy also to just give you an overview of what's on the spreadsheet that I've included for you. First and foremost, the alliance districts were held harmless in this process. And when I say held harmless, what they received is the payment that they received last year. Now, the payment they received last year was lower than what their entitlement was. There was, as part of the continuing deficit mitigation, what was called the Moore lapse, which was $20 million. That funding was, the reduction, that reduction in funding was spread across all of the school districts. So even our alliance districts did receive a smaller amount of funding than what their original entitlement was. But the governor's executive order continues to fund them at the amount that they received last year. For non-alliance districts, the Office of Policy and Management developed a formula for determining which districts would receive funding under the education cost sharing grant. They did that by determining the percent on a district-wide basis, the percentage of their education expenditures that were from state funds. And they then calculated a statewide average based on that, which is 22.2. which is 22.24%. So the decision was made that communities whose statewide, whose state share exceeded the statewide average of 22.24% would be eligible to receive a reduced grant based on the little chart that I've included below. So if you were a community that had, for example, 24% of your education, local education funding came from the state, then you were eligible to receive 10% of your ECS grant amount from last year. Now, that 10% is for the entire year. We paid out 25% of that 10% today. So the districts will be seeing a smaller payment than they would have received last October. If you were a community that your state share percentage was below the statewide average, meaning that the bulk of your education funding came from local funds, then under this, you received no education cost sharing funding. There are 85 communities where that is occurring. One of the things that you will note when we take a look at the spreadsheet is that it looks like funding districts, funding for the alliance districts on their October 3rd payment is greater than last year's October payment. The reason for that is that there is no longer in statute a carve-out for the alliance districts. That carve-out expired on June 30th. So therefore, funding that would have gone separately through the department to those communities as alliance district grants went out under the main ECS grant. So that's why you'll see a decrease. I can answer some questions now, or we can go through the spreadsheet?
I don't think we need to go through all 169.
Oh, no. No, I was just going to give you an idea of what you were looking at on it, an overview of what you were looking at.
And as board members look over the materials, obviously, you can reach out directly to Kathy and get questions answered. I think that it's likely that people may ask you questions as you're out and about representing the board or just in your communities, because it is confusing. And many people may refer to the executive order as the governor's budget. And it's really important to understand this is not the governor's budget, and it doesn't resemble the governor's budget proposal. In the absence of the legislature coming to agreement on appropriations on the budget for this year, the governor really has limited options of how we pay the bills for this year. He can't choose to, new revenue sources such as taxes, there's a number of other things he can't do. He can't move money among different things easily. He can just choose which bills we pay and which bills we don't. And so this is just a spending plan, you know, it's not a, it's not a budget proposal. And it's widely, I think, misunderstood in the public, and so it's very likely that you may have questions about it. And one of the really, the things I find confusing is the status of the alliance districts. But because there was no budget this past legislative session, and therefore no budget implementer bill, there is no law that continues our alliance districts currently. So we're currently in a very funny legal place where we don't really have alliance districts. I mean, we do, of course, you know, because it's our plan, and it's in our ESSA plan, but legally, in terms of the law in Connecticut right now, the first five-year period ended, and new legislation didn't continue them. So the funding is just kind of right now wrapped up into the executive order spending plan, and time will tell if that is continued in the, in whatever budget becomes the state budget in the future.
I have a question, Commissioner. And I'm very reluctant to talk about ECS because it's really complicated to me. So really fundamentally, larger, so how do you compete this money? Is it that the more kids in the district, the more ECS funding one receives, four city receives?
That would be a really logical component of that ECS formula. And when we received the judge's, you know, comments last year that the funding system was irrational, I don't know, you know, which components he felt were the most irrational, but one of the things that would be rational would for a formula to include how many kids you're educating. You know, we should, we should distribute money paid to our communities in part based on how many kids are educated, and probably in part based on the needs of the kids and the ability of the local community to raise revenue to sustain their schools. So these are, I think, critical components of a rational funding system. I think that that is what our legislature is wrestling with and trying to figure out. And for now, we don't have a, we don't have a funding system or a funding formula or a budget. So what the governor and the Office of Policy and Management are left to do is to figure out how to keep our schools afloat until it gets figured out.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the commissioner kind of clarifying the difference between these allocations and the governor's budget proposal. I know that I was confused, and I know people that I talked to in some of the education organizations were also kind of confused. It was hard to separate the two, but I think there's more clarity now. But I appreciate your being clear about it and emphasize it, because it's not something that's necessarily understood.
Yeah, it's very, I confused a lot of the time, so I have to ask Kathy over and over. And I would offer for any board members, as you get questions or as you think about it, and you know that people are going to ask you certain things, reach out directly to Kathy, and also feel free to reach out to Laura, because one of the things that you may want to be familiar with is how different aspects of education or different school districts fare in different proposals. So Laura can, Laura's extremely conversant, and Kathy is as well, in how, you know, you can say, how did this community do in the governor's proposal, the Democrats' proposal, the Republicans' proposal, any future proposals that we may see. And I think this is an unusual time, and I just, you know, want to make sure that you have the support you need to understand what's happening in our area.
I guess that would be extremely helpful. I mean, I've seen the governor's proposals before, but I'm quite sure I didn't understand the last one, the Republican one. But it would be helpful as we talk to people about, you know, what those differences are. That would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
I just had a question as well, because, you know, we keep seeing, and I've heard too, over and over about, you know, the alliance districts, you know, they've been made whole. And I think we have to remember too, that a lot of these alliance districts, all our districts also are, you know, run their systems with other grant money and other programs that are not whole. So saying that alliance districts were made whole is not necessarily saying the whole picture, you know, because I hear it all the time. At least you won't have to deal with layoffs, and that's the farthest thing from the truth, because a lot of these other programs and grants are attached to people, and they're not whole. And so I hate seeing that. I know that's what, as far as ECS money, like what we're saying is whole, but the general public doesn't understand that. They wouldn't, you know, not many of us understand ECS money, so certainly the general public doesn't understand it.
That's a very good, that's a very good point. In a school district, and all funds budget includes money from a lot of sources, some of our school districts have more state-funded grants than others. And so this is only sort of the big picture money that our school districts get through the department. This doesn't, there are many grants that are not going forward currently.
You made me think of it when you talked about Lead, Connecticut, what a huge loss that is, if it's lost.
Yeah, there was no funding in any of the places.
Just, you know, it also doesn't take into account inflation, you know, contracts and everything else. So, you know, being whole doesn't mean those are being covered. And that's a lot of what the school districts are contending with, is they have obligations, and so they have to cut back in some way to meet their obligations, because this is just saying, look, you got a buck last year, you get a buck this year, but their cost may be a dollar twenty-five.
Could we get an update on the court, the appeal, or what, where it stands, was a week and a half ago that they met? I think it'd be valuable to know what the next step is, or is-
The next step is-
We're waiting, and they're still waiting, I understand.
Yeah, the next step is they will issue an opinion, and that could happen anytime between next week, extremely unlikely, and a year and a half from now. I hope that's also unlikely, but, you know, it's, there is no time limit-
Really?
-on what happens. It's up to the court.
All right. And then along those lines, you know, we're always asked to clarify this, but then another question I get, and I'm sure some of us get, is so what are you guys going to do about it? Like, what's, it's beyond frustrating to not have answers. And I know it's the legislature and the governor and us, and everybody's involved, but when will someone step up and say, we need to fix this irrational, too rational? And I just, it makes me crazy to try to answer people, and they're like, so why are there 12 different ways this happens? And why can't you guys get this right? And it's not in our hands, but it's in our hands to help hopefully direct or offer support or help to tackle this whole idea for funding, because, you know, this, hopefully this won't officially happen, but I mean, schools will be-
This happened yesterday.
I know, but I mean, as far as filing through and having all these schools lose this much money in one year, you know, it's just going to devastate a lot of things, and we need to get this funding right. So I don't know how.
Well, certainly everyone in education agrees with that. And I think that, you know, the proposals that started the session started out with a more rational place, and it is a very difficult question. And one of the things that we'll do as well is if the legislature does get to the point where there is a budget during this fiscal year, we will make sure to produce a document, you know, Kathy will help, Kathy will do it, never mind, she'll help me. She'll help me understand what she does, and we'll produce a document for the board that explains what does it mean? Because another situation we haven't encountered before is what happens when you get a budget in the middle of a fiscal year rather than at the beginning of one? Because I think that some people are anticipating that this is a for-now situation, and a later budget will pay the districts back. I don't know why they would anticipate that, because there isn't money to back up that sort of idea.
Can I ask another question? How does, how does this impact the cracks and lurs and the schools? I'm sorry. I'm going to be like Terry now.
You have to change mics.
My question is, how does this affect the lurs and the cracks and the magnet schools that they're operating?
So there are a couple ways, I think. And so Kathy, I think one of the things is, maybe talk about what has happened with the magnet line item. You know, unlike ECS, which goes to the municipality, the RASs that are LEAs are paid through the magnet school line item, although they do have some other funding sources as well.
Yes. So for the purposes of the RASs in regards to the magnet schools, we made the first payment in September to them, which is 70% of what their expected grant is. We did that based upon the governor putting into his executive order a level amount of spending for the magnet school line item. Now, depending upon what happens in the budget, that we could, I think the Democrats' budget had added 15 million, which made me do a happy dance, but, and I believe the Republican budget was slightly lower than what the governor had actually put in the executive spending order. That being said, the amount of funding that's been made available through the executive order will require us at the end of the year before we make the final payment to most likely reduce the per pupil grant amount, similar to what we did last year. Last year, it was we reduced the magnet schools' per pupil grant amount by about 3.7%, because the appropriation wasn't sufficient to accommodate the full grant amount. I anticipate that again this year. I don't have any idea what that number could look like.
And for the RASs, five of them do run magnet schools. For the RASs, they can't raise taxes. Municipalities obviously can address this somewhat through a revenue source. But what they can do is they can charge tuition. And so that's another cost that may be passed on to the LEAs. If the RASs need to charge tuition or increase their tuition, similar to any of our other choice model schools, if they need to charge tuition where they weren't before or increase tuition, that could affect, whether it will affect our local education agencies or districts, because those kids are attending those schools. And so that is another, you know, Aaron talked about the sort of hidden costs in some of the budget areas or non-budget areas, some of the spending plan areas, and that's another potential cost to districts.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
I'd like to just bring to the board another matter related to our finances and to a lot of other things. Unhappily, Gloria McCree has decided to re-retire. We have been unable to beg, plead, or otherwise talk her out of it. And Sheriff of the Audit Committee, I've worked very closely with Gloria, and I've really come to understand just how much a skilled, knowledgeable accountant can add in so many ways to the work of an agency like this. I think she has been personally responsible, she and her staff, working with her, under her direction, for avoiding significant problems that would otherwise have bedeviled this department for quite a while, and reduced the very important trust that the executive branch and the legislative branch and the public can put in this department to run appropriately with a large amount of money that passes through here. So we're going to miss her. And I'd like to read and ask the board's approval of the following resolution. Whereas Gloria McCree has served as the Director of the Office of Internal Audit for the Connecticut State Board of Education since 2013, and whereas through her leadership role at the Connecticut State Department of Education, Ms. McCree has been a fierce advocate for serving the public interest regarding financial and compliance matters. And whereas she is staffed with distinction the Connecticut State Board of Education's Finance Audit and Budget Committee, now therefore be it resolved that the Connecticut State Board of Education honors Gloria McCree for her selfless dedication to the agency and board, expresses appreciation for her years of service to the state of Connecticut, and wishes her well in her future endeavors. Gloria? Thank you so much.
We don't have that person anymore. Anybody take, maybe take a picture. Oh, Allison, take a picture.
The commissioners asked that we do her report, and then we'll take a break if we want. Or would you prefer to continue?
No, let's continue. You know, I'm already dead, so.
Oh, okay. The commissioners asked that we do her report and then we'll take a break if we want.
Or would you prefer to continue?
No, let's continue, you know, I'm already dead, so.
Oh dear. I'm feeling so guilty.
That's the growth model.
Board members, you, um, you do have my written report, uh, but I wanted to, as well as kind of underscoring a couple of points on it, there are some staff members that I've asked, um, to come to the room, so I wanna recognize. One of the things that I wanna draw your attention to is the governor's efforts around the aftermath of Hurricane Maria. And I know that you saw the guidance that, um, our legal team put together and that, um, Charlene's office put out regarding students who are in our schools as a result of weather disasters such as, um, Hurricane, uh, Harvey, I think was the other one in Texas, or Hurricane Maria, which affects students from Puerto Rico. We do anticipate, uh, the need to support our school districts to understand not only the student's right to education, but also logistically how, as you, um, absorb students, how do you reach out for more services? So we will be meeting with, uh, the superintendent's group to support them more in that. But I also, um, I believe you probably know already that we have the largest national guard, uh, contingent in, uh, Puerto Rico now, helping with the relief efforts. And Connecticut will remain a critical partner, uh, to Puerto Rico in the rebuilding and serving the families and students that, um, that need our help. Yesterday we got to do the Teacher of the Year announcement, there's nothing as fun as that, and thank you so much, Dr. Barzy and your whole team. It was a fabulous, uh, announcement and it's been one of those days that just, it was, it's a first grade teacher this year, you'll get to meet her shortly, she's wonderful. And, uh, so we got to go spend some time in first grade, so there's really nothing better than that, that was pretty wonderful. We had some very big news for the department a couple of weeks ago, and I'd like, Levi, you and your team could come up, that would be great, you can sit right there. We, uh, continue, and I appreciate so much the board member support, because everybody has been terrific about supporting our team. And our team is a small but mighty team. Um, I get nervous, 'cause we seem to get smaller and smaller every minute, you know, we stand around waiting to get our picture taken, remembering them. Oh yeah. Thank you, Al, for stepping in. We're all kind of picking up pieces. But in the midst of all of that, some of our team members, all of our team members really are doing more, uh, all the time with less support. And, um, our affirmative action director, Levi, the last being his team, is here today because I wanted to, um, announce that our plan was approved, which is wonderful. And one of the things that Levi has been fabulous about, and, um, also Laanda and Barbara, is helping this plan not only be their plan, 'cause there's, they are three people who or, uh, manage a plan that affects more than two thousand employees, but that it's all of our plan. So helping us all year, throughout the year embed, um, the efforts in the affirmative action work throughout all of our, uh, strategies in the department. So they are a terrific, small but mighty team. They not only support the CSDE here in our offices, but they also are the affirmative action and equal opportunity team for the entire technical high school system and for the Office of Early Childhood, although I keep, um, encouraging independence among that, um, that friend. And, you know, but they do a fabulous job for all of that. We have a combined plan with, um, the technical high school system. So one of the things, um, they're radaring on the horizon is figuring out how this important aspect of work, um, changes with the new legislation, and they're already studying that. So I wanted to just, um, bring them to the board meeting and thank them all, and see if the board, um, if had any questions about the plan or about the process.
I just wanna note that, again, through the audit committee, um, when Levi came, we were on a string of not approved plans.
That's right.
And viewed very dubiously, I think it's fair to say, by the EEOC. And that, whatever it's called in Connecticut.
CHRO.
CHRO, yes. That, that has changed through the effort of Levi and the staff, and we're very appreciative, and I think it's obviously very important work, so thank you very much.
This year, and I think it was last year too, um, I know La- Laanda and Barbara and Levi, it seemed two years now that the questions have mostly centered around the teacher aspect. So do you wanna just say a few words about the process and the interests of CHRO? Because they lead into, I think, an area that Dr. Lopez would want to talk about as well.
Um, well, I think, uh, some of the questions that are coming from CHRO directly to you at the commission meetings are, are more on a global scale. Um, and it deals with, I guess, the impact of education, um, in Connecticut as it relates to minority teacher recruitment. Uh, what we deal with, um, on a day-to-day basis relates more to the Connecticut Technical High School System and the schools within that system. So it's kind of a microcosm of, of Connecticut education life, but, um, but, but it seems like CHRO, as of late, has, has had, um, questions about the, the general, um, idea in, uh, of what education is in the state and how minority teacher recruitment impacts the state.
Important question, I guess. Other questions or comments?
Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a motion on the consent agenda?
Could, um, how do we, can I make a comment on this? Do I have to take it off consent agenda?
Well, if you're gonna make a short comment, I think I'll let you make a short comment.
Yeah, definitely short. Um, just so I wanna bring everybody, um, make everybody aware that this is the twenty-third grad survey that the Agribusiness Program has done. So nineteen ninety-three it started. And my question is, what can we do to have all school choice programs do a five-year graduate survey? 'Cause I think it's so valuable to see what kids are doing after they make these choices. The state spends a lot of money on school choice programs and the Agribusiness Programs back in ninety-three, a law was passed to have a five-year graduate survey for them. And I just think it would be very important to see that for everybody, for all of our. So I don't know how that happens. It's, I guess, a question more than, you know, who, I know this is legislatively done, but something had to start to get there. So how do we request that? Because I think that the tech schools charter, all of them, I think the public would love to see the results and accountability and, hey, these are great programs and we support school choice. So twenty-three years this group has been doing it, and I don't know how, you know, how can we have everybody do it? It's just a question to whoever, I don't know.
That, that we can look into.
Look into, I'd like to, yeah.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
I suppose. Okay. And I think we're up to ten B, let's go.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to, um, give an update to my fellow board members about a year ago, we asked Sarah Barzy to meet with the former teachers that had retired from the system that represented the minority teacher community and talk to them about the, the gap between, um, in, in terms of recruitment between, um, for, uh, teachers of color. So she planned a luncheon at Southern Connecticut State University, they hosted it, they served a wonderful luncheon, and not, you know, mentioning just for anything, but.
She's stunning.
But, um, and, and, and I wanted to thank Sarah publicly, because she did a great job together with the staff. And part of what happened was the, uh, sharing of information, data, so everybody knew, uh, what the challenges of understanding the gap, having specific goals that she had shared with us here in terms of recruitment, and also talking to them about what can be done, what are the, uh, strategies that can, uh, be done. We also talked very frankly, because in, in, uh, this conversation that we're having about recruitment of teachers of color, there's been misguided, um, uh, talk about that the intent is to lower standards. And I wanna make sure we all understand that we're talking about eliminating barriers, unnecessary barriers at all levels, and not lowering standards. That's not the intent, that's not what we're pursuing. What we want is how do we attract and retain teachers of colors that we know are so important? Then we had group discussions, and something simple, I, I'll share with you, because, uh, he may be here, but he was the one that, um, that asked, there were two students, uh, present, or three students present at the luncheon. So in the, um, breakout sessions, he asked a student, one was studying social science, so he asked him, if you knew that these were the shortage areas, would you have gone to social science or would you have chosen, uh, a shortage area? And the student looked at him and said, oh, I would probably have chosen a shortage area. He was a veteran, he was a, you know, an older student. And that's a very simple solution that is on the, um, side of the higher education institutions, to orient students when they start about the shortage areas. And to guide them that, and sort of suggest that this could be a, an opportunity. So a lot of those things came up. I know Sarah will follow up, but again, I wanna thank her. It was a really wonderful, um, event, opportunity, and the, I think the teachers really felt, um, that they could contribute toward these goals, so thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, Al has informed me that we didn't actually take a vote on the consent agenda. So may I have a motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Al. Committee reports, academic standards.
We're meeting next, next week, right?
Yes. Accountability.
We're meeting next week, maybe?
Finance audit and budget, I'm not sure when we'll next meet, but we, we, we all know what the financing issue is. Legislation and policy.
Um, we met this morning and we had a very sobering, uh, conversation about our vulnerable students that are homeless. And it's a, it's an emotional topic, because you wanna get to why does that happen? We have forty-five hundred students, kids, in the state of Connecticut that are homeless. And fifty percent of them are under the age of five.
Hundred, what did you say?
Forty-five hundred. And it was a great conversation led by Charlene. She had a guest from, um, the Connecticut Coalition to End Homelessness. And it centered around the McKenney Vento Act, uh, which I was unfamiliar with. It's a thirty-year-old act this year. Uh, it provides for all districts to have a liaison to understand the homeless population and, and get them back into, uh, education. The thing that I was most touched and, and, um, pleased by was the efforts that Connecticut makes to make sure that we get these kids back into the system and streamline them. And it seemed to be very genuine, um, and, and very heartfelt in our process. But the fact that we have, um, that situation is just, it's terrible, but yet we have to identify it and deal with it. So Charlene, you did an admirable job, uh, presenting that.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to discuss, tech schools?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to introduce Jeff Webby, who is the interim superintendent. And, uh, you've not met Jeff, and so I asked him if he would give the update today.
Okay.
Jeff's doing a great job of, of continuing to move the system forward.
Just, uh, we, we met a couple of weeks ago for the, uh, the State Technical Board of Education meeting. We, you know, engaged in, uh, you know, some of the data points with our mastery-based learning math program at the board meeting, as well as some of our literacy, uh, data as well. We started to talk a little bit about the vision and the goal-setting aspects, uh, you know, for, for the principal evaluation, which trickles down to the teacher evaluation for the year. And, um, most importantly, uh, we had some good news that our enrollment is, our unofficial October first enrollment is up about a hundred and sixty-five students for this year. So, uh, we'll have more official numbers to report after that, but, um, so that's kind of the, the good news. And a quick summary, uh, Mr. Trefry told me to make sure we, we keep it concise, a quick summary, uh, for, uh, for the technical, uh, school. One other thing that, uh, that took place this, uh, the past several, uh, weeks that we talked about at the board was, uh, the school, the opening of school visits. Many superintendents can visit all of their schools, um, in fifteen minutes. And as you are aware, we have twenty locations across the state. And I just wanna personally thank Commissioner Wenzel and our board chair, Mr. Trefry, because we visited, they, they visited, uh, several schools with me, but we visited all twenty, met with every assistant principal, principal, and union steward, uh, across the state. So, uh, it was, it was, uh, an invigorating activity, so thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you. NASB. Our vice chair has been nominated, as we wish, to be a member of the NASB Board of Directors and that will be, I trust, ratified happily right in New England region at the beginning of November, NASB next meets.
Did you have anybody else?
No, 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 no. Wrong. They chose the best. I don't think we have anything else to say. We are adjourned.
Thank you.